We'll reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Is his microphone on?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The City Council gave approval to the city attorney to seek appellate review in the case of Robert Gop versus City Folsom. The vote was unanimous.
Thank you very much. All right, then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members, Roarbaugh, here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Leary.
Here.
Rathel.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here. You'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, any agenda updates to report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We do have additional information transmitted for item 14 on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and it is also available on the table in the back.
Okay, thank you. And as you'll notice, our city manager is not here tonight. Unfortunately, he has been under the weather all week, so I think he's watching. So Brian, go to bed, get better soon, and I hope to see you back here. That takes us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, but please understand we cannot take action or deliberate on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak from business from the floor?
There are no requests to speak from business from the floor.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on business from the floor? See no one. We will move on to the next item, please.
Next is scheduled presentations. Item number one is a presentation from the Folsom Police Department regarding e-bikes in our city, current status and future direction.
Thank you, Lieutenant Verhalem. We promise not to kill the messenger.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff. Jake Verhalem, Lieutenant with the Police Department. So this presentation I'm going to give tonight is really designed to set the stage for a proposal that Commander Andrew Bates will be bringing forth at your meeting on the 9th and December regarding an adjustment or a change, modification to the Folsom Municipal Code specific to e-conveyances. So this presentation really gives you more of an overall view of some of the issues that we've been dealing with in the police department, specific to those challenges. I would imagine, and I'm aware that most of you have heard from your constituents, a variety of complaints going all the way back to when these things really hit the streets in Folsom. So this is going to be some of the data that gives you some more specifics, kind of drills down into just how broad this problem has become. Some of the e-bike laws in California, and a lot of people are having a hard time becoming aware or familiar with them. Fortunately, we have a really robust tab on the police department's website where parents and anyone who's looking for additional information can go and look this information up even after this evening. So a Class 1 e-bike provides assistance only while pedaling the bicycle, and it can travel up to 20 miles an hour. A Class 2 has a throttle similar to a motorcycle, also assisted riding without pedaling up to 20 miles an hour. Class 3 has a motor that provides assistance only while pedaling, and it can travel up to 28 miles per hour. That slide just shows some of the age requirements and bike access as far as where they can go, up to the Class 3, which is forbidden from bike paths. And I'll use the term "e-bikes" pretty much synonymous tonight, but it includes these e-motocycles as well. An e-motorcycle is, this is a perfect example of one, and we've all probably seen them from time to time out there. It's electric-powered only. It goes faster than 30 miles an hour, in fact, some upwards of 60 or even 70 miles per hour, depending on how big the battery is. The rider of this has to have a California driver's license and a motorcycle endorsement, either M1 or M2, just like an adult would have to ride a motorcycle. It also has to be registered with DMV and have a license plate, as well as all the accoutrements that would come with a vehicle that's street legal, like turn signals, brake lights, headlamp and the similar. This just shows the popularity, which we're all obviously aware, these things are all over the place. But from 2020 to 25, there's been about almost a 200% increase in e-bike sales across the United States. As far as calls for service, this slide goes back to 2023 and takes us all the way through October of 25. As far as calls for service go with e-bikes specifically, more than 90% of those are involving juveniles. And then you'll see on the hotspot map right here, there's two places where we have the most predominant issues, number one being Economy Park with almost a quarter of those calls for service, followed by Palladio with about 16%. In that hotspot map slide, we have the top five categories for calls for service, the first one being reckless behavior, which accounts for almost, or better than 2/3 of the calls for service. And then it's traffic stops, patrol, so on and so forth. Again, most notable about this slide is that in 2023, we had merely 23 calls for service regarding e-bikes. Fast forward to only the first 10 months of 2025, we've seen 350, as an increase of almost 300% over the year prior. We've had a fair amount of collisions involving e-bikes in the city as well, going back again to 2023, we only had four. And we've had 12 in 2025, which may look like a small number, but of course, it's three times as many as what we had merely two years ago. In these collisions, almost 2/3 of the riders are juveniles. 3/4 of those, the rider of the e-bike was the proximate cause of that collision, so the juvenile was at fault for the collision. And what we saw was that this was a 70-plus percent increase over October of last year. These slides right here are these two images that are embedded right here, representative of in-car camera footage stills from some juveniles that we had some dealings with after calls for service. In this particular slide here, this juvenile was reported as vandalizing people's garage doors and yelling slurs at the victim. When the officer arrived on scene, the juvenile engaged the officer by yelling at them as well. That then led to the juvenile fleeing the scene in excess of 60 miles an hour in a 40 mile per hour zone. We canceled that pursuit for the safety of everyone involved. However, we had air support that evening, and so we were successfully able to capture that juvenile with assistance from the Sheriff's Department. He was arrested, booked for the charges you see there on that slide. This is another example where an officer on viewed a person on an e-motorcycle. This individual ran from the officer initially, including running a red light. The officer attempted to apprehend the subject physically by tackling him, and that person on the bike then tried to speed away, dragging that officer about 25 feet. The officer didn't know at the time that it was a juvenile based on the size of the person, the fact that they were wearing a full-face helmet, as you can somewhat see from that photograph. Later determined that he was 16 years old after he was captured and arrested. That officer actually was injured as a result of that interaction and has been actually off duty for many, many months now. He's getting pretty close to recovery and coming back, so they are dangerous, not just for the people riding them and the people out in the community, but for the officers that are dealing with some of them as well. In response to some complaints that we had recently with the middle schools, we did a focused, kind of an educational and enforcement piece at Folsom Middle School and Southern Middle. And the results are at the bottom. So on the 7th of October, we started with Southern Middle School. There was five warnings and no citations issued. They followed up a couple of days later at Folsom Middle School. They issued 12 warnings there and two citations. That was a collaborative effort with our school resource officers and the admin of those particular campuses. They were seeing a real significant increase in issues with the e-bikes as school began that year. So we worked in partnership with them to try to figure out something that had, you know, it was mostly educational to begin with, to try to get people on board with what we were trying to achieve. And they've been doing follow-up since. Our traffic people, our school resource officers have still been in contact with the school to make sure that the results that we saw in the beginning are still continuing today, and if they're not, then we're handling those issues accordingly. In addition to the specific school stuff, anytime we get a call for service, we're handling those. Our officers in the field are responding to those calls as needed. So we, as soon as these things hit the streets of Folsom and started to become a problem as far as calls for service, we've been actively involved in enforcement as much as we possibly can, especially in the summer, once the kids are out of school. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Sure, we have some. Also have some requests to speak from the public. Councilmember Roarbaugh, any questions for Lieutenant Verhalem?
I'll wait to talk with the public.
Okay. Councilmember Leary?
I do have a question about some of the behaviors that goes along with the riders of the e-bikes, you know, that are harassment, following kids off around home, when they're walking home from playgrounds or on the playgrounds, disrupting soccer games by riding through there. And I don't know if there's a specific way to respond to that or do something different educationally about it, because I think at least the incidents that I've been hearing about are reported to the police, but by the time anybody can get there, the kids are gone.
And sometimes that's the case, and not just with a call for a complaint about an e-bike, but it could be a call for a person who's reckless driving down a street or anything for that matter. If all the officers who are working at the time are tied up on higher priority calls, by the time one of them is able to break free and respond to that call, there is the likelihood that the people have now left.
And then, but in the educational sessions, you know, with the kids that you've all been doing, is, I don't know if it would be appropriate, but it seems like addressing some of those harassing kind of behaviors might be another message to pass on, that those are unacceptable or like increasing the negative feedback everybody's getting about e-bikes?
Yeah, and I think that's a really important message too for the parents to receive as well, right? So that they're having those conversations with their children, and hopefully that message is being received, and hopefully they're working in partnership with us.
And do the parents come to any of those sessions where you're educating them?
Well, as far as the ones that we've done at the schools, there has been some interaction with parents who may have been called by their son or daughter because we were taking in, like in that one slide you saw, that we did issue a couple of citations. In that instance, I believe it was two brothers who had both shown up on those e-motocycles, which they weren't even old enough to be operating in the first place, so there was a variety of violations there. If I remember correctly, the parents responded to the school, and there was some discussion between them, our traffic people and the school resource officers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a tough problem from many angles.
Vice Mayor Rathel, any questions?
I just want to comment that your heat map made me feel a little bit better. I thought I was just getting old and crotchety, because there's a lot of e-bike challenges in Briggs Ranch in my neighborhood, and I know we've talked about it before, but it's good to see that heat map that's there, so we know where to deploy those resources. And there's definitely the challenges in our neighborhood, so I appreciate you addressing it.
Of course.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Is there state law limiting us from licensing the riders or the vehicles? Could we require that if you want to ride it out, if you're inside your subdivision, for instance?
The answer is yes. The state law does require that certain riders be licensed.
Can we extend those to younger riders and other classes and have a...
You can require locally that they would require a local permit, but not a state license, which doesn't exist.
That's what I meant, a Folsom driver's license.
Yes, sir.
Permit.
Yep.
And a plate that we issue to the vehicle.
And some jurisdictions do even for regular bicycles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why I asked, because I've seen that before.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, very good. That's it.
So in terms of what you have the ability to like impound right there on the spot, if somebody is using one of those e-motocycles on the street that they're not supposed to, you can impound that on the spot?
Correct.
And what about an e-scooter? We know that you have to be 16 years old with a driver's license, right, to use those? So if you're a middle school student, you're not going to be 16 years old. Can those be impounded on the spot?
Correct. I believe, I believe the e-scooters can because of the 16-year minimum age requirement for them. So even though it's different because they're standing on it versus riding it like a motorcycle, it has to do with the speeds and such. So, and again, going back to the motorcycle requirement, it's, even though we see kids on them and they're using them for fun, it really is no different than another electric vehicle by, you know, I've used the, I've explained to some parents, like, you wouldn't let your 15-year-old drive a Tesla, and they can understand that, but when it comes to the e-motorcycle, there's some sort of a disconnect. And at the end of the day, we're talking about two vehicles that are electric-powered and capable of really, really incredibly high speeds.
Yeah. Is there any way to hold parents accountable when their kids are using these in a way that's against the law?
So I think what you'll see with that presentation from Commander Base in December is that, and I haven't seen the proposal, however, I've looked at the GALT model, and I think if I'm correct, there's a caveat in there that basically has parents accountable for their juvenile children who may be riding these things, so that they're fully aware and if something were to happen catastrophic, that they are in fact on the hook. And it kind of goes without saying, they should know. If we have juvenile children, as I do and many of us do, we know that if they cross a certain line, we're going to have to answer for it, as long as they live under our house and they're juveniles. So, but I think it's more of a way to really memorialize it and probably draw more attention to the fact that this is a really significant issue in our city. It's only really probably by the grace of God that we haven't had a catastrophic collision involving one of these that resulted in a significant injury to a juvenile, or worst-case scenario, the death of someone.
And I know Parks and Rec is working to make improvements to the bike park, but do you get any sense in talking with these youth that if we gave them a place to ride, if we said, hey, you can't be here, but we have this place over here for you, do you think they would do that? Or no matter what we do, they want to be at Taco Bell and Economy Park and Palladio and all those places?
I think some might, because not every, not every kid in the city who's riding an e-bike, e-scooter, e-motorcycle is out there causing problems for us and generating calls for service. Some of them are doing, you know, they're being as responsible as they can, even if they might be breaking the law. But a lot of these kids are riding them to school as a form of transportation, and I think that's probably where the, part of the parental disconnect is, it's convenient. And if there's no bus, and school's two miles away, and they got this e-motorcycle for Christmas, now they can get to school, and the parents don't have to worry about picking them up after practice and all these other things. I think, I think a big driving factor is the convenience of it. And then for the ones who are out there creating the situations, running from the police, trying to engage people in negative ways because they tend to be on their cell phones and recording it, or their friends are recording it, and they're trying to create a very prolific social media existence so that they get likes and what have you, that's part of the challenge too. There's lots of, it's a multifaceted problem, I think. And I think, yeah, you could, a percentage of people would probably appreciate that and abide by it, but you'd still have the folks that, the kids are just going to do what they're going to do, and the parents who sometimes are as defiant with us as their children are, once we've called them to the police department to say, hey, we have little Johnny in the backseat of this police car because he ran from us, and we have his motorcycle, and we need you to come and speak with us about this situation.
Okay, we do have a couple requests to speak from the public.
There's two requests to speak. First up will be James Kerstein, followed by Robert Goss.
And just remember, a reminder that we give members of the public three minutes, so you could be concise, we'd appreciate it. Jim, come on right down here to the center microphone. Oh, keep going. Yep, in front of the computer. There you go. And if you can make sure you're speaking into that microphone so the recording picks up.
Okay. By the way, timed myself, should be two minutes and 30 seconds if I don't mess up. First little background on me, a longtime bicycle rider and racer. Until I retired at the age of 68, I commuted on my bicycle to work in downtown Sacramento. That was a 62-mile round trip commute. I love the city's trails. I helped Jim Knopka when he asked and when he retired from the city with the planning and building of the city of Folsom's trails. I was also president of the Friends of the Folsom Parkway's for many years. As a citizen of the city of Folsom and a user of the trails for over 30 years, I've become aware of the increase in the number of e-bikes, also known as e-motocycles, in the city. Most of these e-bikes riders are school age and not old enough to have a driver's license. Therefore, they are not required to know the laws in operating a vehicle. An e-bike is a vehicle, according to DMV, that is legally authorized to use the city's trails and streets. But the problem for those of us that frequently use the trails is that the kids on the e-bikes create hazard. People buy e-bikes for their kids, they do over 15 miles an hour. The kids don't respect the road laws at all. There should be zones where no bikes are allowed, and those would include trails in the open space areas. For example, presently, no bikes are allowed on Hinkle Creek Trail, since there is a hard trail next to it. Let's keep those kinds of trails open to walkers, given that they are narrow and limited visibility. I enjoy the city's Parks and Rec departments' walk and talk activity. It is intended to give people over the age of 65, I'm 83, an opportunity to walk safely on the trails. Too often, we are subjected to young kids and e-bikes going by us at over 15 miles an hour. The trail's speed limit, by the way, is 15. Often, they are on the wrong side of the trails and do not call out that they are approaching. This is very scary when we are trying to stay healthy. I'm a fan of e-bikes. It's great seeing people who are older and can't keep up with their partner to be able to do that again. It's just too bad the young kids on e-bikes make it unsafe to do so. The city must aggressively, relative to the enforcement of e-bikes, and to avoid seniors in harm's way. The city should make a rule that to sell an e-bike, the buyers and users of that e-bike should have proof that they know the rules of the road for operating a vehicle in California. Hopefully, I read what I wrote.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Yep, the next speaker is Robert Goss.
Good evening, Robert.
Mayor Aquino, Vice Mayor Rathel, councilmembers, good to be back. Robert Goss here, past president, Friends of Folsom Parkway's, current board member. As you, I think, all know, the Friends of Folsom Parkway's are administering the Adopted Trail Program, which we're, you know, helping with maintenance, just general maintenance of the trails. So we're out there all the time. We're stewards. We see this, and I say in all caps, we see this all the time when we're just out there doing our thing. What I'd like to add a few things, and this is, there's the fundamental issue that the officer detailed, but I'd like to add to this, trail damage. Our trail standard is pavement plus shoulders, typically decomposed granite. I was a kid once, I get it, but they're out there with the, they have Class 2 e-bikes with a throttle. They love to, you know, line up their bike, hit the throttle, and just squirt DG from the shoulder onto the bike trail. Done in a corner, that makes the corners very, very slippery, and then, you know, accidents can happen. They're pioneering new trails in open space areas. Again, I was a kid, I get it, but that isn't what our open space areas are for. We're protecting those. They're digging and building jumps for their enjoyment. Again, I get it. They're, of course, riding recklessly. And the problem's expanding beyond just the e-motocycles that Lieutenant highlighted for us. I was out in the vicinity of Cone Park one evening, walking the dog, big group, and this is not far from Councilmember Roarbaugh's neighborhood either. Walking the dog, here comes the big group, there's seven or eight riders, and there are two, mostly they're e-bicycles, but there's two e-motocycles and a real dirt bike, internal combustion engine, at least 70 cc's, maybe 100 cc's. And I had a chat with them, I was polite, I said, guys, you know this isn't legal. Oh, no, it is legal. My parents said so. I got the whole pushback. And then they took off, and we had a young male riding an internal combustion engine through Cone Park into Lexington Hills area. So it's expanding, the problem's expanding, not contracting. And then, I think we all know, the trails and parkways are used as escape routes from their poor behaviors, and it just allows them to scatter so fast, and they think they know the trails better than we do. So that's not really, you know, the parkway's fault, that's just what they're being used for. So from the Friends of Folsom Parkway's, a few suggestions to consider as you deliberate and you talk about the modifications to the municipal code. As Jim said, prohibit bicycles and e-bikes in sensitive areas like the Hinkle Creek Nickch area, because we've got a beautiful natural surface trail paralleling a paved trail. They, you know, if we need e-bikes out there, e-bikes on the paved trail, but not on the walking trail. And I think there's some other areas in the city, or possibly just the entire Humbug Willow Creek Parkway system, you can't have e-bikes off the pavement because it's just going to damage the natural environment. Consider allowing use in the power line corridor, so the kind of crosstown power line corridor. PG&E's cut a lot of trees out there, it's not what it once was. Maybe that's a place, if they need to ride in the dirt, that would be allowed or tolerated. I say consider, it's not necessarily the best idea, it's just an idea.
Robert, if you can quickly give us your last couple recommendations.
Yes, thank you. In parks, there's problem. I hadn't heard this thing about the riding through a soccer game and busting that up, but maybe a 5 mile an hour limit in parks. Again, how do we patrol it? I don't know. I shudder, maybe about a citizen's arrest type of a thing, but, you know, maybe. Education directed to parents, it's more the parents' issue, of course, as you know, than the kids. I think fundamentally, then, the final thing is make sure that Police Department and Parks and Rec has the resources to implement, you know, the final recommendations. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, any final comments from my colleagues? It sounds like we're going to have some, another presentation in December. Councilmember Roarbaugh?
Yeah. Can you bring up the heat map? This is very concerning. I have gotten a ton of pushback and complaints about e-bikes in my neighborhood, which is right in the center of Parkway, as Robert Goss just articulated as well. I mean, you can see where that heat map is. It's pretty much the northern side of the Parkway. And so this is what is considered as, people reference it as the duck pond, but it's around Manasco and Bowen. Concerning the last couple weeks is that they're taking those motorcycles through that area, which is a nature reserve. I hate to limit things, you know, one of the, Jim referenced that it's already 15 miles per hour on the trails, which I didn't realize. I have seen that, I just forgot about it. So there's already a speed limit on there, so, you know, enforcing these things is so troublesome. But, so I'm curious as what ordinances we could do, and then how would we enforce it? I do like the idea of what my colleague suggested permitting, but I don't know how we'd go about enforcing that anyways with the limited resources. I do like the idea of maybe putting up more signs about our speed limits, and then maybe if we do create a, maybe a steeper fine for that, for that, for going over the speed limit, maybe there's a way to incorporate the community, like the Friends of Folsom Parkway's, and doing kind of, you know, you have those speedometers that you can give out. I know the Public Works can give those out sometimes, doing, you know, different enforcements, having our neighbors get involved, not arresting them, obviously they can't do that, but tracking speed limits. So I'm curious, if we did more ordinance or reduce the speed limit to 10, is there even a way to enforce this? And then what would be the consequences to, how would we enforce just allowing it on pavement? I think it always goes back to enforcement, right? Like, we can put all the rules out there we want, there already are some rules in place, they're already not supposed to be having these, but how would, how would you see us being able to enforce it? Because that's really the problem.
So, specific to like speed violations on the trail, I mean, it would be as simple as traffic officers out there on the trail tucked away on a motorcycle with a as traffic officers out there on the trail tucked away on a motorcycle with a LiDAR unit, and as somebody comes down the trail that looks to be speeding, they would just click the button, and then it would give them the speed of that vehicle. They would pull the vehicle over, just like stopping a car for speeding on East Bidwell, for example, and then it would be up to the officer during that contact whether they were gonna issue a verbal warning, a written warning, or a citation for that moving violation.
And that would work towards the kids that would stop?
Correct.
Right? And then you could get their address and their parents' information, and communicate and educate, and that would be tough, but that's gonna work for those kids that really want to comply. But do you see that working with the kids that, because there's a groupful, a group out there that actually live in the Parkway that don't want to comply?
And for something like that, we would, you know, maybe get more creative and have kind of a focused, again, going back to the schools, it was a collaborative effort, not just with the admin of the schools, but between our school resource officers and our traffic bureau to go out there and, and kind of really spread out and, and work to address the issues. Again, there was a couple of citations, but it was mostly educational and warnings. But, you know, similar to the way we've done blitzes to combat organized retail theft, if this continues to be an issue post municipal code, specific to increased enforcement of these e-bikes, it wouldn't be outside of the ordinary for us to, again, have a group of our traffic people, school resource officers, maybe even we call in assistance from another agency and have some additional motor officers come in. We have drones for the people who don't want to stop, we follow them with drone technology, our own air ops unit, so to speak, since we don't have a helicopter, follow the person on that e-bike home with the drone. Now we know where they've landed, and then it's as simple as going and knocking on that door, introducing ourselves to the parents, and then we handle it that way without, you know, anybody running from us longer than just taking off, and then, okay, well, we're gonna follow you like this with a video game controller and the eye in the sky.
Okay. I do think that's a good suggestion that Robert Goss made about, and what you kind of suggested, is where can we suggest these kids go? Having some off-roading, you know, the power lines, I mean, most people aren't walking through there. And that could be a creative, I'm not sure that's the police department's, but maybe that would be working with Parks and Rec and identifying some of these locations.
Yeah, and, and I think to the mayor's point, that if you create a, a place for people to go and utilize in that way, that there's probably a lot of people that would take advantage of it in, in the appropriate way. Unfortunately, there's still gonna always be those people. No matter how much speed enforcement we do, we're still gonna have people speeding. No matter how much red light enforcement, there's always gonna be those people that, that run those red lights. But it's, I think it's definitely, probably a good compromise, right, between the education enforcement and the city saying, "Hey, we're asking that these parents help us, we've set aside this property, this space, it's designed specifically for them to be able to operate these things lawfully under certain conditions, and, and we just ask that you partner with us in this way."
You know, I would like to support anything that the police department can do as far as ordinance or whatever that has a little bit more teeth, and that might mean more, you know, a bigger fine or something, and how can we get that into the, the parents' hands? I don't mind warning first, as well, I mean, I think this is becoming a big enough problem that most parents are now aware of it, I would hope. I mean, do you feel the same, or?
I think most of them are probably aware. I think for the ones that haven't had, you know, for the ones who have children who haven't had an interaction with a police officer, specific to them operating an e-conveyance, maybe they're unaware of it, because they haven't, there hasn't been an issue. And so nobody's called them on the phone to say, "Hey, I have your son stopped on this thing, and I need you to meet me here." So I would venture to guess that it's reasonable that some people still are completely unaware, and not because of anything other than they just, they just don't know until they know, right?
So I know that, you know, that kind of enforcement day, the October 7th and 9th, came after our two, Justin and I's two-by-two meeting with the school district and the police department as well. So I do appreciate that there was that much follow-up and that kind of blitz happened. I would like to see more if we are able to, and I know this isn't your first priority, our police department's first priority, it's to the bigger crimes, but this is becoming such a public quality of life issue. Just to speak to what Jim said, that's, I get a lot of complaints from our, our older generation, and it is worrisome. I've had some of them go past me, I don't know how fast they're going, 30 feels like 60 on the trail. I'm sure they're probably going 25, 30, but even that's, you know, disorienting, especially when I'm watching toddlers walk around and then dogs and any other pets. So I had a question here, and I just, what can, what can residents do? I mean, coming here is perfect for people to kind of share, speaking out to their council members is important as well, and then we're able to articulate it to you, but what can they do?
So, for, for the residents who are experiencing issues, you know, specific to e-bikes, I would say, you know, put it on us, put it on the police department, and rather than sending an email or a phone call or a text message to a council person, call the non-emergency line for the police department when it's actually occurring. Sometimes, as I explained, we might not have someone available to get there before they've left, but very many times, we are able to get there while they're still on scene. Perhaps we have an officer right around the corner, just happens to be in the right place at the right time. By those calls coming directly to the police department versus being filtered through any other sort of area, it gives us the best opportunity to be able to respond in real time and hopefully catch whoever those people are doing that. And whether it's in, we take enforcement, or it's an educational moment where we call the parents out, depending, you know, on that particular situation, but yeah, give it, give us a, give us that information as soon as we possibly can get it, and we'll do our best to send an officer or, or officers to that location.
Now, I have received information about different addresses where some of these kids live, and do you still want that information? What, what, what gets done when that is related to the police department?
So, in a situation like that, where it's not necessarily an active situation, but there has been some history specific to people related to a particular house that are juveniles and operating these e-conveyances in an unlawful manner, we can follow up by going out to that house, attempting contact with the parents there to say, "Hey, we've received complaints about these e-bikes. Do you have a son or a daughter who has one of these?" And then kind of start the conversation that way. If people have video evidence of, of something occurring, that is terrific, of course. Unfortunately, what we've seen in, in most of these situations is the, the bikes are all like a flat black, and the kids are wearing pretty much all black clothing, a black full-face helmet, and so there's really no unique identifying characteristics whatsoever. It's just, there goes an all-black e-bike with a black helmet.
Well, it's good they're wearing a helmet.
They're at least wearing helmets, and, and, and most of them on those are, appear to be wearing DOT-approved helmets, rather than just a bicycle helmet, perhaps for the anonymity that it affords them.
My, my concern coming into the holidays is that those that are not aware that this is an issue, parents may be gifting their kids new e-bikes, scooters, motorcycles for Christmas. So, you know, I know that, we talked about this in our two-by-two meeting as well, but what can we do to educate parents now before they're buying these gifts or then giving these gifts out? Or even what can we do to educate, you know, is in the Parks and Rec thing that goes out every quarter, you know, just making sure that we're continuing to educate, I'm not sure that's just on you, but, but definitely you're, you know, the police department is a part of it. So I would like to see more education go out at this time of year, and I think that's why we're talking about it today and gonna be talking about in December as well. One of the things that I would like to consider with Public Works and Parks and Rec, too, is more signage, maybe once we get a new ordinance, if we end up enacting a new ordinance, what would that fine be for speeding? And maybe having something on the sign of doubt that this is also directed at e-bikes, and maybe a few more placements. There's not really that many, there's a few signs that they're not, they're not allowed, but they're not, I'm, I'm on the trails almost every day, and there's not a ton of it. So maybe a little bit more placement of it as we maybe are doing some more enforcement, and that might help educate, because obviously some parents are walking, too, but also maybe off the trail. So I, I think we just gotta kind of keep, continue to think outside the box, and I appreciate all the support the police department has done. As I tell the residents who call me, or talk to me, or stop me on the trail, it's like we're doing what we can, we're, we're increasing our enforcement, and, you know, maybe there's a few more things that we can do strategically, like you did on October 7th and 9th, as we go into the holidays, that could help. So if we can put some resources to it, I think this would be the time.
And, and we are, I don't know, Vice Mayor Rathal, was it this week or last week we did the two-by-two?
Last week.
Last week with the school. And we talked, and, and I talked with Christine about messaging, I looked at a kind of a draft email that she was, that the city plans to send parents as a, a warning, so to speak, as we're approaching the holidays and Black Friday is right around the corner, that before they go and buy one of these e-conveyances for their son or daughter, that they are aware of the laws and, and, and some of the creative ways that kids have tried to figure out, or they think they've figured out to kind of circumvent the system and the laws by, for example, attaching fake pedals to an e-motorcycle, so it looks like it meets the requirements when it clearly does not. But there is a piece, whether it's been shared by the city yet or not, I'm unaware, but that is a direction that the city's moving in to try to get that message out before Christmas.
And, you know, I did appreciate the permit. I mean, having a permit to have an e-bike.
The program worked out already.
You, or you've been working on it right now? Yeah. I think that's an interesting, so thank you for your presentation.
Of course.
Did you have something to also?
I'll just have a few things.
Okay. Remember that this is coming back to us on December 9th to actually take some action.
I understand, I just wanted to kind of underline what I think may be helpful. And first of all, I like their use of drones, I think putting a motorcycle on the trails and chasing kids down the trail who are speeding or whatever is probably dangerous, not only for the kid and the motorcycle, isn't anybody else using?
We wouldn't be chasing them, but our, our traffic officers are specifically assigned to motorcycles because it allows them to get their vehicle onto the bike trail and then tuck away and be kind of hidden, so that they can hopefully catch these people who are, who are breaking that law.
And I'm just wondering if you couldn't have some increase in the use of drones as a, just an intermittent monitoring method, especially on high-use times on the trails, I don't know whether that's after school, during holidays, or probably high times for these things to happen, because you can, like you said, follow the kids home and get an address. The, I like the idea of the power lines. We do have Prairie City OHV Park, they don't allow, you know, the e-bikes, but they allow the, the motorcycles. And giving that kind of information out to the kids that have those bigger kinds of things, and maybe doing an educational piece on that, because they do have outdoor trails already constructed. And then on the permitting, it seems like it would be helpful to identify who these are if there was a permitting process and a requirement for an identifiable, like license plate, because you can't identify, kids in black clothing on black bikes as they go speeding by, so that might be another method. And then just the use of trailers, you know, with the alternating signage, maybe by the entrance to some of these trails and just saying, you know, electric bikes and motorcycles not allowed on the trail intermittently. I appreciate all your efforts, thank you.
All right, very good, thank you, Lieutenant. We'll look forward to the presentation this summer. Do you have something to add?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, God, for certainly spending a lot of time on this item.
So with, with regard to my suggestion of permit program, it should be a shared permit between one of the kid's parents and the kid, so that you can tie the permit to their driver's license. That's straightforward. The vehicle should have a registration decal attached to it after they go through one of a semi-monthly series of training classes to teach them laws and give them a chance to not get their vehicle impounded because they A, don't have a permit, or B, have violated the rules in some way. So that's, that's my actual suggestion, is that you have the parent and the, their charge have a shared permit, the vehicle has to have a tag on it, and then if they, if they get, if they interact with the police without those things, their assignment is to come to the next training and get it permitted. And if they have been to one of the permitting events, then the, but the vehicle gets impounded, and then there's escalating fines, depending on whatever the rules are that we impose. That's the full story. Thank you.
All right. Did you have anything you want to add?
I'll reserve most of my comments for next meeting and questions when we have something to act on. But what does jammer technology look like? I love drones, but is there an option now? We're going into the next century, so.
We need an EMP that can kill a bike.
I'm just throwing it out there. Think on that while you're on December 9th.
We don't even utilize it, you know, yeah, it's, it's something.
Giant magnets.
I'll hear about it on the 9th.
There you go.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant.
You're welcome.
All right, that takes us to our consent calendar. Is there any item that anybody wants to pull? We don't have any requests to speak on any items, do we?
No request from the public to speak under consent.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rohrbach.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Rathal.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, next item, please.
Next is public hearing, item number 11, resolution number 11505, a resolution adopting the November 2025 adjustment for the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Infrastructure Fees and setting the updated amount of the SPIF fees.
Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, trying to get this mouse to work. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. The item before you tonight is resolution number 11505, adopting the November 2025 adjustment for the SPIF. The SPIF program is the funding mechanism that equalizes the cost of the public infrastructure, the public land, and the community parkland in the Folsom Plan Area among all of the developers. This includes improvements such as roadways, sewer facilities, potable water facilities, recycled water, storm drainage, habitat mitigation, and other costs. Have a little bit of background here on the program. Back in 2015, the City Council established the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Infrastructure Fee, that's known as the SPIF, and there have been several updates that you can see here on the slide over the past 10 years. Most recently, in August and November of 2023, when the City Council approved the SPIF fee adjustment to update the construction cost estimates that were used to calculate the fees. In addition to these adjustments, there have been periodic construction cost index, CCI, updates, and the most recent update was July 1st of 2025. This 2025 SPIF fee adjustment was done at the request of the SPIF Administrator, the city, and the landowners to update the construction cost estimates used to calculate the fees. This adjustment alters the fee amounts based on the city's August 2024 Specific Plan Amendment. It includes updated construction costs and the amount of development remaining in the Folsom Plan Area. The adjustment includes the land use changes that were included in that 2024 Specific Plan Amendment, and so that resulted in more fee-paying dwelling units. And this adjustment also includes the addition of a few improvements, Sierra Parkway, Haven Parkway, and a power pole relocation. So even though the cost of this infrastructure program in total increases as a result of this update, the fees per unit for each land use have decreased, for the most part, and you'll see that on the next slide, because the increased cost of the program overall is now being spread across more fee-paying dwelling units. The adjusted fees, if approved, will become effective January 15th of 2026. So here we have a chart of the updated fees for residential units. This does exclude the area of Folsom Heights, they have their own fee schedule, that is included in your report. But for everyone else with this adjustment, the SPIF fee will decrease between approximately $431 up to $4,116 per unit for the residential uses, with one use experiencing an increase of $193. And this slide here shows the fees for non-residential uses decreasing between $13.19 and $0.42 per building square foot, with one land use experiencing an increase of $3.79 per building square foot. And we do have Jamie Gomes from EPS here with us tonight to assist with any questions that you might have, have related to this update. But with that, staff recommends that the City Council conduct the public hearing and then adopt resolution number 11505. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Stacy on this side? Nope, any questions over here for Stacy? All right, then this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
No request to speak for this item.
Anybody in the audience who did not submit a blue card who wants to speak on this item? Anybody in the audience who did not submit a blue card who wants to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 11505.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Council members Rohrbach.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Rathal.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is new business, item number 12, Folsom Kids Play Park Play Structure Replacement Project. This item has three related resolutions, resolution number 11497, 11498, and 11499.
Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Brad Nelson, Park Planning Manager. The item before you tonight is the Folsom Kids Play Castle Park Play Structure Replacement Project. As part of this item, there are three separate resolutions. In brief, resolution 11497 approves the name of Castle Park. 11498 authorizes a sole source procurement from Leathers &amp; Associates. 11499 authorizes a sole source procurement from Playground Plastics. Each of these items supports a timely, safe, and of course, a community-supported delivery of the project. The resolution number 11497 is renaming of Castle Park. The park's official name is Folsom Kids Play Park, and that was, given that name about 30 years ago, and it was from the original community-led group, which was Folsom Kids Play. So they were the folks that were responsible for doing the fundraising for the original build of the park 30 years ago. However, everybody basically knows the park as Castle Park. So during the design phase of the park renovation project, we had two community meetings, one in June and one in July. And at those meetings, participants were asked to weigh in on changing the name to Folsom Castle Park. And feedback, feedback at those meetings was overwhelmingly supportive of the change. So on October 7th, the staff brought this recommendation to rename the park Folsom Castle Park to the Park and Recreation Commission. And at that meeting, a community member requested the name be changed to simply Castle Park. The Park and Recreation Commission forwarded the recommendation to change the name to Castle Park under the City Council for your consideration and approval this evening. Moving on to the other two resolutions, those are both sole source procurements. One is for, with Leathers &amp; Associates, and the other one is with Playground Plastics, where they're following Folsom Municipal Code for sole source procurement. It's used when only one source is available for a required product or service. A contract may be awarded without competitive bidding, and the department must verify and document that no other sources exist, and a waiver of bid is prepared and filed with the city clerk. So a quick background on the play structure design, how we got there. So we did have a design review committee, and those members included Council Member Rohrbach, Parks and Recreation Commissioners Brian Wallace and Sandy Economy, Joanne Barash, who represents Kids Play for Generations, who's the fundraising effort, Bonnie Bernstein, who's with Little Folks University, and staff including Parks and Rec Director Gonzalez, myself, and Project Manager Hannah Perez. We did meet twice in September, on the 4th and the 16th, to review the design. The final design was approved on October 7th of this year, and that design is a custom designed by Leathers &amp; Associates. And some of the main features of that are inclusive play components, custom slides and climbing elements, ADA accessible play zones, and the community build model. This is the final design rendering. I'm going to do just a brief, quick, very high-level overview of that. So just to orient yourself, Pruitt Drive is down on the bottom of the screen. We kept the original fence locations for both the large and the small tot play areas. This is the existing shade structure, which we kept. This is the 2 to 5 player area. And if you see this sort of blue coloring, that's the port-in-place rubberized surfacing. So we tried to make these new structures more accessible for folks in wheelchairs and with other disabilities. We are maintaining the sand play area in the middle. We're also maintaining the sun dial that's there. This is the larger 5 to 12 play area. And again, we have the whole front of the structure is accessible via this rubberized play surfacing. The rest of the tan coloring that you see around here is the engineered wood fire bar, which you see in most of our play areas. A little bit on the project budget. The total cost of the park is estimated a little over $1 million, and the cost of this project is funded by three sources. So the Parks and Recreation Equipment Capital Fund, which is Fund 609, we have $778,000 in that fund. And Measure A Fund, which is Fund 276, we anticipate $135,000 coming from that. And in-kind, very generous in-kind services and donations, which are totaling over $153,000. So that's where we come up with $1 million. The portion of the project being charged to Measure A includes ADA and bike and pedestrian trailway system improvements. There will be a future resolution that will accompany the site work contract that's going to be using those Measure A funds specifically, and that will be coming to you hopefully in December. The items we're discussing tonight, however, are all being charged to the Park and Recreation Equipment Capital Fund, which is Fund 609. And the Folsom Kids Play Park Play Structure Replacement Project is included in the fiscal year 2526 Capital Improvement Plan with a project budget of $800,000. So a little bit about the sole source from Leathers &amp; Associates. The materials that are included in that are custom slides, inclusive swing components, activity panels, and climbing structures. Why we're sole sourcing those, the specified equipment is designed to meet the precise specifications that were established in the approved drawing. So that's in terms of height and dimensions and width and everything, these pieces fit in, will fit in perfectly with the design. It also, everything complies with National Playground Safety and Accessibility Standards, ASTM, Consumer Product Safety Commission, which oversees Playground Safety Guidelines, CPSC, and of course, the Americans with Disability Acts. This also allows us to maintain warranty eligibility. The Leathers &amp; Associates quote for those materials is $100,790. Staff is requesting an additional 10% contingency to account for any increases in freight for a total not to exceed cost of $110,870. Now, a little bit on the sole source with Playground Plastics. So those are proprietary structural plastic lumber, which is from Polyforce and Tan Deck, and those include color core fence pickets and color core structural pieces. So the color core means that there's this different color that's in the core of the plastic lumber, and that allows us to do, if you're familiar with the structure, there's routering and a lot of detailed work that goes along with that structure. So when they get down into that core, you'll be seeing a different color to add some relief and some depth to the structure itself. There are many different types of plastics, plastic lumber out there, but few are really considered to have structural integrity. Playground Plastics is currently the only vendor with a product that meets the structural specifications required for this project, and that's specifically around the structural rating and the span. So the span has to do with where the posts are laid, where the beams are spaced. So typically on, with composite lumber like that, all of that is a lot closer together than you would have on a typical wood structure. Playground Plastics product also has an external layer that encases the core and is comprised of high-quality resins, pigments, and UV-resistant additives, creating a more durable, superior external finish that requires no waterproofing, staining, or painting. The Playground Plastics quote for these materials is $293,000. And again, staff is recommending including a 10% contingency to account for any increases in freight for a total not to exceed cost of $322,000. I wanted to, before I go to the recommendation, I just wanted to provide you with some updates as to what our next steps are. So upon the approval this evening, we'll be ordering those playground construction materials. This week, we're completing the site work construction documents. I am hoping to have those complete by Friday of this week. And then we'll be onboarding the site work contractor, hopefully at City Council on December 9th. And then the site work construction is anticipated to be in January of 2026. The community build schedule is dependent on getting all that material ordered, so we've been given a 15-week lead time because all of it is custom-made. And then we're still park, we're planned for the park opening in April of 2026. So with all of that, the staff recommendation is resolution number 11497, a resolution approving the name of Castle Park, formerly known as Folsom Kids Play Park. Resolution number 11498, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a sole source procurement from Leathers &amp; Associates for materials for the Folsom Kids Play Park Play Structure Replacement Project, community build for a not-to-exceed amount of $110,870 from the Parks and Recreation Equipment Capital Fund. And resolution number 11499, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a sole source procurement from Playground Plastics for materials for the Folsom Kids Play Park Play Structure Replacement Project, community build for a not-to-exceed amount of $322,594 from the Parks and Recreation Equipment Capital Fund.
Thank you very much, Brad. Councilmember Kozlowski, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Rathal?
Kind of a question. Can you go back to the rendering? For those that may see this eventually or are watching tonight that didn't see the rendering the night it was revealed, I know that there were some questions about water fountains. This is a rendering, this isn't exactly. So can you address, the water fountain was a big issue, and then the current, are we keeping the current coverage pavilion? And then can you talk about any updates on a restroom?
Sure. So the, we have a separate set of drawings that's being prepared for the site work, which includes the replacement of the concrete walk. And we did make some adjustments to this edge here. So you remember the frogs entries are here and here. So the, this plan doesn't show things like the drinking fountain. So the drinking fountain is currently over in here where it gets filled up with sand, so we're relocating the drinking fountain right here. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Rohrbach, about the site area, didn't, I'm not quite sure.
The gazette or the?
Oh, the outdoor shade structure.
Yeah, I mean, you're showing it there, but it's staying as it is.
This is staying exactly as it is. We were able to, we saw cut the concrete there and there, so the picnic tables are staying in there. We are using some, we're installing new picnic tables and new benches. Some of that is surplus that our parks maintenance staff has. In fact, the drinking fountain is also parks surplus, new material that we're reusing.
And then the third question was about, and these are the three most questions I got that night, so that's why I wanted you to address them, is about a future restroom.
So we, we were, looked, in consultation with our utilities department, we looked at potential sewer locations. There is existing potable water on the site, which is, will be here. And then there's existing electrical service on the site, which we can also, you know, basically route anywhere. Our biggest concern was the sewer, and so there, because there is no sewer line in Pruitt Drive directly in front of this, but 35 or so years ago, when this was developed, somebody had the foresight to bring in a sewer line from the, from, I'm not sure what the name of the street is, on the other side of those houses that are in the back of the park. And so there is a sewer line that runs between two parcels, and it's on the sort of left side of the site. So that's been a big, is a very big plus for us. So once we kind of get all of this, you know, ordered, everything ordered, we're still working with our community groups, we're going to be putting together, you know, a package and getting more serious, you know, drawings and details and everything for the restroom building. Some of the site work that we'll be doing will also stub out some of those, the water and the electrical to this location here.
So those watching, while we can't put in a restroom at this point in time, and probably not by April unless we can, we are currently looking at different funding opportunities, areas that we can put a restroom that will serve that entire trail system. So it is on the radar of, we can do the infrastructure work now, and then hopefully we can find funding for it and move forward and maybe, and I don't want to give any timeframes, but, and have a future restroom there. So it is, it is still definitely a priority, but we didn't want to push it forward. And we don't want to delay this project because we don't have funding for the restroom yet. So just for those watching, that this is still, that is still a priority.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leary, any questions?
Yeah, I do have some questions here, and part of this is about the funding. I know we approved a budget of $800,000 for all of this, and the, you know, a lot of the costs have come up and been filled in with Measure A funds for the accessibility. And then the, are the in-kind services and donations that, inclusive of what's already been raised by the volunteer group?
Yes, it is.
And I'm understanding that there's a potential for that number to go up to cover increased costs. So the estimated cost for the portion of work for the site work is, do you have a ballpark figure for that?
We're right at around $200,000.
Okay. So the total cost would come to around 1.2 hundred thousand, million dollars?
No, the, we have a more detailed, the site work is listed in the, on page five.
That's part of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. So that was, the site work is included in the $1 million. So we, at this point, we don't anticipate going over that.
Okay. That was my question, because I think we were trying to keep costs down, just to be able to service a number of other parks in the districts.
Correct.
And in terms of the timeline, do you want to, can you go over that again, a little bit like for final completion?
So the, so this evening, if this is approved, we'll be ordering the materials, the Playground Plastics, and the other components from Leathers &amp; Associates. The site work construction documents will be, also be completed this week. Then we'll be onboarding a site work contractor in December, and our goal is to have that on the December 9th City Council meeting. The site, that site work then will be, occur in January of next year. The community build is scheduled for March of 2026. We anticipate doing some pre-work out there with some more skilled labors before we bring in the general community to get sort of a running start on everything. And then the park opening is planned for April.
Okay. And some of this will be dependent on weather or any other issues that come up with the site work.
Don't put that out there.
I'm just saying, I just want the community to not say, wait, it was, it's not here in April. So how many builds are in March? Is it considered one weekend build or?
It's one, the community effort will be one week, that's what we're anticipating right now. But a few weeks before that, as I mentioned, we're going to bring in our skilled, skilled volunteers, who will be, right now, we're looking at, we have groups from contractors and various home builders who are looking at helping us with that. So they'll be able to do, set the footings for the posts of the structure and do things like that.
Okay. And I, the one question about having a one-week build, is that over any holiday time, only because you'll have more people available if kids aren't in school during the five days of that week?
Correct. We're looking at, we're looking at those dates right now, and as I mentioned, it's contingent on the 15-week lead time for the material that we'll be ordering.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No request to speak for this item.
All right. Then we need three separate motions. Councilmember Rohrbach, would you like to do the honors?
You knew I would. I'll make a motion for, for resolution number 11497, renaming Castle Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rohrbach. Yes. Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rethel?
I just want to add, I think you guys nailed the design. You guys worked great with the community and listened, so I appreciate that. And I'm happy to vote yes.
Thank you.
And Aquino?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 11498.
Second.
We have motion and second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rohba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rethel?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
I move Resolution Number 11499.
Second.
We have motion and second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rohba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rethel?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is Item 13, Resolution Number 11506, a resolution of the City of Folsom declaring its intention to modify the assessment rate of the Folsom Tourism Business Improvement District, fixing the time and place of a public meeting and public hearing thereon and giving notice thereof.
Good evening again, Stacy.
Good evening. Just setting up the presentation here. Having trouble with the house. Are you able to help me up there with this? Can you get into the folders at all?
I, I can't control the computer.
Okay, there we go. It's starting to work now. Okay.
I can send it up there once it's open.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Eileen Reynolds. I am the Chair of the Tourism and Economic Development Corporation, TED Corp. And we are here to recommend that we raise the Tourism Business Improvement District from 4% to 8% through virtue of tonight. You adopting a resolution that would go out to the hotel owners because they're the ones that pay this assessment and ask whether they are okay with it or whether they'd prefer to protest it. I am the opener. I am going to hand off to Sally Buchanan, who is our Vice President for Tourism at Choose Folsom. I am joined today by the Vice Chair of our organization, Martha Lofgren, and also by a renowned expert in this field on T-bids, John Lambeth with Civitas. And also, one of his folks is Tess Gallagher tonight. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sally and then I will come back with the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and the audience. I thought I would start tonight, for those in the audience who might not have read the staff report, to talk about the timeline. Because tonight, the council is, would only be adopting the resolution of intent to modify the T-bid. They're not approving the modification just yet. If they approve the intent from there, tomorrow, we mail all of our hoteliers hard copies of the resolution. And we've met with all the hoteliers already and they're all behind this effort. After all, you'll hear what we want to be doing, which would be increasing tourism and economic activity for the city. And then there's a couple of other steps. 45 days after that email, there's a public meeting, a public hearing. And then hopefully, all goes well and council approves. From there, the hotels would set up their POS systems and by hopefully around April 1st, start to collect the assessment. I do want to note that the assessment, it's not, it's an assessment, not a tax. And it is collected by the people who stay in the hotels. So they are paying the assessments and, and the TOT. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew what a business improvement district was. And it's a self-assessment. It's agreed upon by the like businesses. In this case, it's our hoteliers. And the, the fee, the assessment that's, the hotels collect then needs to be used for the specific purpose of driving tourism, room nights, heads in beds in the City of Folsom. How can we grow our tourism economy, which is really important? Constructing new facilities or as important, upgrading facilities that we currently have. And with those efforts, whatever we are doing should increase, increase demand or average daily rate, sorry, ADR is average daily rate. We are also right now marketing our nearby regional amenities in our goal country in Eldorado County. Eldorado County funded its tourism through TOT and they needed to use that money to close a, a funding gap. So they cut tourism and we picked up Jody Franklin from, who handled their tourism for 17 years. So now we're really working on a stay here, play there campaign, use Folsom as a base camp for all the things here and right around us. We also, in 2003, ending in 2004, we did a destination asset study, which covered five different areas, an entertainment venue, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, event attraction, conference meeting space. And I can tell you, you'll see in a minute, there are projects in every one of those areas that we could build and/or improve in this area that would help us increase our tourism. You know, increasing demand helps increase overall occupancy and the average daily rate. We can also attract further private sector investment and look for public-private partnerships. And I can say that we are falling slightly behind our neighboring destinations. Red Hawk is talking about building an arena up on Bass Lake Road. They're talking about building two hotels, a conference center and entertainment venue. Our partners in Placer Valley, Roseville area, they have the grounds, which is a huge indoor facility that can host many, many basketball, volleyball tournaments in, indoor. And Rancho Cordova has their downtown Dova huge project that they just announced in the last month. And I hear they'll be creating their own T-bid for that project. Not sure if that's true, though. A little bit more about our destination asset studies. Again, these were completed in March of 2024. The market has already changed a bit. There's new projects coming on. There's some that have already opened. So we're going to have to take a step and take a look at these again. But in each of the areas, there are projects that we could work on that would put heads in beds and increase tourism traffic to our community. People who stay in our hotels don't generally buy off Amazon. They're shopping in our stores, they're eating in our restaurants. Any facilities that we would build or upgrade need to be operated. We would get more jobs during the build process and more jobs for people to operate. I do want to say that the Folsom Tourism and Economic Development Corporation, we are not interested in, in operating any of these facilities. So, but we are interested in helping get them going and making sure someone or more of these come to the market. We do not have any specific projects right now, tonight, that we are asking you all to increase this assessment for. After we, if this all goes through in January, we will be getting together a committee of stakeholders. Of course, hotels need to be on that committee because they're the ones who ultimately agree or not agree to even take this assessment because they have to approve or actually, at this point, they have to protest whether or not we want to do this. They are, we already have an assessment of 4%. But we can have more soccer fields, upgrade some current ones, put some Bermuda grass on some ones that aren't really usable for tournaments right now. So we've talked to Folsom Lake Surf. There are things we could do to help us increase tournament play, which drives people to town. We've done two studies now on conference center hotels. We can use about 18,000 to 20,000 square feet divisible, so it could have breakouts projects. Most of these projects would need some public-private support, especially conference centers, they don't pencil out themselves. Indoor sports, we studied the Folsom Ranch Sports Complex and that space could be used for things such as volleyball, covered space outside for soccer. So it is a multi-useable space in and of itself, entertainment venue. And Folsom is always really strong for events. So any and all of these can help drive more economic impact. What are the financial options for us to implement some of the assets of the destination asset study? We could use municipal funds, private investment, public-private partnerships is, is key. And I can say, just wanted to note a couple of examples of T-bids who have used funding to help build projects. Placer Valley bonded and they helped build out the grounds and they actually operate that facility. Again, I want to note, we don't really want to get into the operation game. And Sacramento, I believe, used some of their bid money for bonding and they built the ballroom at the convention center. Some facts about tourism in Folsom. We have currently 904 rooms. When the AC Hotel in the Palladio is, opens in hopefully June, that will make, bring us to just over 1,000. Rancho Cordova and Roseville have double our rooms. When our T-bid was initiated, initiated in 2002, it was with a 2% with a five-year sunset term under state law. It was renewed in 2007, same term. In 2012, the, we established the T-bid under a city ordinance at 4% for 20 years. It's much easier to plan when you have a longer term. It's hard to, to plan and, on shorter terms. And that current term expires in 2033. And if approved, this additional 4% increase will generate approximately 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars a year. Currently, our, the T-bid rates and TOT rates in our surrounding regions, I might add TOT, transient occupancy tax, that goes into the general fund of the municipalities. Most our jurisdictions around us are between 14 and a half and 16 and a half percent. We're at 12 between the two. So we do have some room to grow and be competitive in about the same rate as our neighboring jurisdictions. And as Eileen said, we are asking for a 4% increase. And with that increase, we plan to dedicate the, that additional 4% and keep it separate so it is just used for building new destination asset infrastructure or making improvements to current and any of the associated costs. What are the potential impacts of raising the T-bid? We're direct, direct investment in our demand drivers. We need facilities that, a meeting facility to help fill our hotel rooms midweek. We've been lower midweek ever since corporate travel kind of dived, took a dive after COVID. Leveraging collaborations and making our dollars go farther. We do intend to, again, we, we don't want to build any one facility. We'd like to prioritize the projects, determine which ones are feasible and then potentially bond and invest in several opportunities so we can make our dollars go farther and invest in public-private partnerships so that even increases the, the reach. I talked a little bit about our other markets that have done something similar to what we want to do. And when people are, come to our cities to stay a while, they spend money and it generates more TOT, more BID, more tax revenue in general. And it helps us remain competitive.
Next, I'll hand it back to Eileen.
Thank you, Sally. Great job, great job. So this is the recommendation. Primarily, it would kick off the process tonight if you approve the resolution so that we can go ahead and mail to the hotels and find out whether they're on board with this. We think, based on what Sally said, from meetings that have been taken or had with the hotels, that they are generally for it. And one quote I was given was, well, we need to do something. We think this is an innovative approach that will help us remain competitive in the region. So essentially, we're recommending that you raise the T-bid assessment to 8% under the present 20-year term, which expires in 2033, and dedicate the new 4% assessment for tourism facilities, amenities and associated costs. Form a TED, TED Core Task Force. And with that, we would love to have city representatives. We'd love to have representatives of parks, planning, the Folsom Athletic Association, folks who put on events, who can give us more information about what could be feasible here so that we could study the heck out of it and come back with some really great ideas about how to utilize the money, do some feasibility studies and be able to move forward on some actual action with some projects in the city. So we're excited about it. The TED Corp Board, with a quorum present unanimously recommended this. And I'd love to see you support it tonight. So this is our recommendation. And like I mentioned, we have these experts with us from Civitas, John Lambeth and Tess Gallagher. And also our Vice Chair, Martha Lofgren, who, as you know, has lots of city credentials and is very familiar with the Folsom Code. So with that, may we answer any questions for you?
Thank you very much. Let's see. Councilmember Rohba, any questions at this time? Councilmember Leary?
Yeah, I have quite a few questions. I actually met with Vice Mayor Rethel and Joe Gagliardi last week for the, my first review of how this was all going to go. And I've come up with a number of, of questions since then. I am wanting to be sure that this is a transparent process, that, you know, it's not uncommon for people to ask in various organizations throughout the city or residents about what kind of funding the chamber is currently getting from the city and what kind of, you know, resources are being provided. And I want to be sure that that is a part of this process that, and, and that is going to cover, you know, how this process actually moves along. So, you know, the city has some facilities that, that are used that I don't believe the, the city gets reimbursed for, for the use. For example, the Chamber Depot is rented to the, is rented to the chamber for a dollar annually by the city, which owns the site. And there's a new proposal, I guess, for a retail facility to go in and what kind of money would we get back from that rental?
Councilmember Leary, I'm, I'm not sure what that particular question has to do with this.
Well, I, I think that it has to do with the fact that in order for us to, or for me to feel comfortable approving this, I want to make sure that this process remains transparent and that we, the city has input into kinds of projects that are being proposed and brought forward for us to support. Is that something, you know, that, that we would want to see here? And then for them to put in a whole lot of energy into?
I would love to answer the question. The good news is, and we didn't think it was good news at the time, but there was a new state law passed that applies the open meetings law to T-bids. So in this case, TED Corp is now fully available for public participation. So I think a lot of that transparency concern that you would think would, you know, this is going to go, be hidden in a room somewhere. But because we do get local government money, that means we are subject to the Brown Act, which means essentially, we are noticing all of our meetings now and also allowing for public comment, just like you do here.
Okay. So that, I mean, this money and any money that the city's supporting the chamber with would be?
And I'm not qualified to go beyond as far as what the city funds the chamber.
I just ask these questions and people ask me to ask these questions.
Okay, okay. I mean, I don't know that we have an answer to that.
Right.
But I don't think we do at this point.
Yeah. And the other thing I think that we talked to Joe about last week was having the possibility that facility, facilities could be improved. And I think that one of you brought that up about improving the sports fields so that we could have more tournaments here.
Absolutely.
And what, can anybody answer the question about what that would look like?
You mean what, which fields?
No, not which fields, but, you know, fields would be identified. No, not which fields, but, you know, fields would be identified and, um, and had, I, that would be something that you would work with Parks and Rec on.
Yes, in fact, we've listed a whole bunch of folks we think that we ought to work with.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, you know, and city, it, up there is pretty broad, obviously, but yeah, we need everybody who has anything to do with capital facilities in the city, I think, would be, we would want their participation so that we could be sure that we have a broad range of folks looking at this.
And would those be public meetings?
As far as I understand, yes, they would, because we are public, you guys are public. I mean, I guess there are certain scenarios where if we didn't have a certain number of Ted Corp members present, I, but I, I don't know, it, it gets dicey about Brown Act stuff. But I think that, um, I think for the most part, I, we would expect that they'd be public.
And there will, as I mentioned.
Sally, into the microphone, please, so we can, the recording.
As I mentioned, um, on the studies, uh, we did a lot of studies and they did talk about some fields that we have or the needs for soccer versus baseball. And we were talking with Kelly a little bit yesterday. She was mentioning, mentioning some things that need to be done, but we have to put that all together and really determine what are the projects that are going to put the heads in beds and then work with the city and Parks and Recs to make sure that project, we would be allowed use for tournaments, because I now know right now, a lot of the, um, the fields are for community first. So what's, what's the new plan together, a blended, making everybody happy? Because ultimately, Barbara, the, the, the hotels, um, approve this or can take it away and they have to approve the project. So if we say we want Lumbi Park done, but the hotels say, well, a conference center is going to go, but, and we only have money to, so much money to do, there's going to be some negotiation, give and take on everything. It's just not, but absolutely, it's better to start with something that's already built than having to build everything new. So there's, well, there'll be a whole process and we'll have a stakeholder group and there'll be city people, Parks and Rec, FAA promoters, someone maybe from the Folsom Lake Surf, maybe, um, hotel conference and meeting planners, there could be, we have to, when this is approved, we'll really think about the way that all unfolds.
It'll also have to be prioritized, because as you know, and one, it's an extra one to one point five million dollars a year. And I mean, that's, in the scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but there is an opportunity for the city to bond against it in the long term. And I think that would be maybe some of the larger, um, leverage points that we have that could actually, you know, result in something, you know, a bigger deal than just patching a field.
And that was one of my questions about bonding and the city would be bonding against the money or the developers?
I am no expert on bonding, but that's my impression.
How does that piece work?
We might throw this to John.
I, I can briefly answer that. Yes, it would, it would be the city that would bond against it. It would generally be taxable bonds. But right now, the way that this is set up, we'd have to come back to you to, to set it up differently in order to move forward with bonding.
So no matter what, it would come back here to a public process if we go that route.
Okay, and then, um, the, you know, when we have increased use of, of our roads and facilities and all of the rest of that, there, you know, there's a potential for having some costs, um, that would be anticipated to come out of the general fund. And is there a way to kind of assess what an increase in tourism would bring in in terms of an increased sales tax dollars for the city?
Yes, that would happen with all, with the studies.
Into the microphone, please, Sally.
Sorry. Yes, that would happen with additional studies and we had some preliminary data in the original five studies, um, but it, they weren't really in depth, but yes, that would come with studies and it would all be prioritized.
But right now, there's not really any, I guess there's no data available to date about the increase. Like if you look at last year's data that y'all provided in a recent, um, update, uh, on tourism and the results that were done.
I think, I think the challenge is that we can't really estimate yet, um, how the money is going to get spent and what type of tourism-related assets are going to be funded, because that's going to depend on how, or that's going to be the crux of what causes more heads in beds. And it's the heads in beds that's going to deliver extra dollars for the city, because that not only will increase the transient occupancy tax per person, per room, that's rent, not per person, but per room that's rented, but it'll also increase the sales tax on that expenditure and also the money that Sally, um, mentioned where all these people that do stay in our hotels tend to go to our restaurants and do all that. So you have a multiplier effect. But no, I don't think we have anything beyond anecdotal, um, evidence that that would be the case. But we do believe it will help enhance the city's coffers.
Okay, and, um, another question is, um, this is just specifically focused on tourism and putting heads in beds. And is, and I don't know how every arm of the chamber works, but, um, what, uh, so this can't really enhance the ability to do more economic development in terms of bringing in more, um, employment centers, uh, you know, where we would have potentially more corporate travel?
And this money has to be approved by the hotels and anything that we do with it has to, the intent needs to be put heads in beds.
No, I understand that piece. I'm just wondering if there's like a.
I don't know if I had time to look at your question and it really did drive corporate travel, potentially, yes. But I, I don't, I can't really, I'm not understanding the context of your question really, but if it was a project that drove people here for training and they were coming from other areas and they needed to stay in our hotels for two weeks at a time, that would be putting heads in beds, so.
I think a conference center would be a good example of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's not an amenity, it's something you're building for your corporate.
Exactly.
Your corporate entities.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, actually, it's like, how do we, and I, I know this has nothing to do with this current ask, is how are we or the chamber working on bringing in more, um, employment centers? You know, we lost, you know, we're losing a lot of the intel, um, employees and, um, filling in those other areas. And I'm just asking, is there something the chamber is working on in that direction?
I think that's our next presentation that you can ask us to come do and, um, Joe and Taryn could come speak to that more than I could. Unfortunately, I can't, I, I don't work on economic development every day. I wish I could answer that question.
One of the things I.
Well, I sort of see it as a part of.
I mean, one of the things we do know is that Chamber is active, working with GSEC to bring more businesses to the region. And so a lot of times we are the incidental beneficiary of, of folks that come and say, wow, Folsom's a cool place to, to live and work, so let's, let's put ourselves here, you know, but I don't think that we could say right now that this money could go for that.
No, I, and that wasn't the ask. I'm just trying to put together in my head.
And Sally's answers.
What might be of, you know, an economic development area that, that, a proposal or not proposal, economic development plan? And this would fit into a piece of that, but I'm like.
Could I ask John Lambeth from Civitas to come up here for just a second? I'm going to maybe help guide this discussion a little bit. Hi, John.
Good evening, ma'am.
So, so when you pass a school bond, for example, you have to say the bond is going to go toward constructing new schools, renovation of existing, existing schools, um, security upgrades, you know, you have to kind of have this laundry list of things that you're going to cover and it can only cover those things.
Yeah, absolutely.
How does it work with this? Do we have, do we have to specifically say it's going to cover these things? Can it be, can it be used for anything? Who decides that, that type of thing?
Well, th- this is really a, a way to think about this, Madam Mayor. Good evening and good evening, council members. John Lambeth, uh, with Civitas. Is think about it as a two-step process. This is raising the assessment rate now to generate some funds to try to advance projects, identify projects and advance them. You'll come back later when you're ready to build something and at that point you will be bonding and you will say very specifically what that money goes for. Now, unlike a school bond, this doesn't have to go to the voters. We won't have to go to the voters to do that, but it will be very specific and it's going to require council approval. So none of, none of these facilities that they're talking about, if you go to bonding or do any of that, none of that's going to happen without coming back to council. And we actually anticipate amending your ordinance and there's going to be quite a bit of work at that time, uh, to put the bond in place.
Okay, and, and so, for example, let's say that we decided that, um, being able to host soccer tournaments, right, is the thing that's going to put heads in beds and we want to take that money and spend it to renovate all of our fields that need work. It could be used, if I'm understanding, it could be used to renovate city fields. It could be rented, used to renovate school district fields, because oftentimes we have schools located next door to parks. Is that correct? Is there anything that's off limits? It could be used to, to help support something that is being privately funded?
All, all of the above. It, it, the most significant requirement around any of these dollars is that that benefit the payers. In this case, that's the hotels. And so that, these are part of a family of districts called special benefit assessment districts. So the lens we look through toward anything you would invest in is, does it benefit the hotels? But beyond that, it's really quite broad in terms of what you can use it for. And if you look at the language in the ROI tonight, it basically says to use for facilities or things related to facilities. I think Choose Folsom wanted to make sure you understood it wasn't for just ongoing operations that they're doing. It is related to facilities and those things, um, related to the facilities.
Right, and so, I mean, this is one option. Of course, the city could choose to increase the T O T, but that would have to go to the voters.
That's right.
This is a way to kind of improve some of our facilities, um, add some amenities, some enhancements that could attract people, but this only has to be basically protested by the hotels. It doesn't go to the voters.
That's correct.
Okay. Does this help answer your questions, Councilmember Leary?
Yeah, and, and what I wanted to be sure though is that we have some input, you know, as, as a council elected, people representing the citizens on, and particularly on, um, decisions that are made that are going to impact things where there's going to be an overlap of people outside users versus people that you currently use our, um, existing facilities, um, because I could see where that could kind of get out of balance.
Well, it sounds like there would be certainly collaboration. The city will have a seat at the table, but, and, and you would have to have our approval in order to do any bonding. But ultimately, it's the hoteliers who are taxing themselves, basically, and they're the ones who are going to decide.
They get the last word.
Yeah.
Well, they get the, they get the last word.
It takes their support and your support. If either, if the council doesn't support it, it doesn't happen. If the hoteliers don't support it, it doesn't happen. It's, it's going to take both of you. And I think they've done a great job of saying, let's get everybody on the team that's looking at this so that we can build a consensus and have support when we come back.
Last tiny bit of clarification, um, and just to really parse words here. If the improvement that's proposed is approved by the hoteliers and it is on a city facility, we actually get the last word. If it is not on a city facility, it's private and ever, the hoteliers get the last word, right?
Not necessarily.
Unless we are bonding money against the revenue.
And that, I think that's what we're.
If we're paying as we go.
Yes.
Then they could spend it on whatever they feel is going to.
That's right.
Kind of fit them.
That's right.
Thank you.
But it would be very unusual for a capital facility like that not to have.
Nonetheless, there's those three different pathways.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I just don't want to cede, you know, the power of all these decisions to someone that we can't communicate with on a regular basis and that's willing to take input from what we're hearing back from our citizens.
Definitely a collaborative effort.
And I, just one last question. So how, how, does anybody have a vision of how that might work? Like, uh, you know, public workshops or, uh, updates at the council, um, where people have the opportunity to, to address concerns?
Right now, our hat, hatched idea is to create a task force, a joint task force of, of a whole bunch of folks. So I think what we would do is talk to the city, um, to the, to the staff and see who ought to be sitting at the table for them. We would probably appoint a few members of our Ted Corp Board. We would reach out to some community members and hold a series of meetings. You know, whether the city hosted them here or we did them at the Granite School or, or what have you, I, that's to be determined. But I think the bottom line is we want as much input as we can get so we fund or have the idea to fund some of the best projects that are out there that people actually want.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Rathel.
Technical question. Oh, please, please stay up here. My, my question is for you. I was consulting with my own, uh, T bid consultant earlier. We call him Chat G P T. And I.
Excellent.
I'm, I'm guessing you are much more knowledgeable than Mr. Chat G P T about these things. But from what I can tell, it looks like Rancho Cordova and Sacramento, uh, do include Airbnbs and VRBOs, although they don't force those sites to collect. They try to collect independently, which I imagine has a relatively low success rate. And Elk Grove does not actually have that. So, um, why are we not including those? And my main concern is like, I, I like level playing fields. I say, hey, um, if we're going to charge the hoteliers, why don't we charge that? And then my other, my other concern is we're leaving some money on the table that could be used to go for these, these facilities. Obviously, these things are also going to be bringing people into our Airbnbs and VRBOs. So if you can help me, uh, understand why we're not modifying that portion also while we're going to modify the rate, that would be much appreciated.
It's a, it's a great point and there is definitely a trend across the country to include short-term rentals in districts like this for exactly the reason you said, that most people like a level playing field. And the hotels certainly, in most places, uh, like a level playing field. Some, some destinations have said, and the hotels have said, we don't want short-term rentals in because they play by different rules and we might have a, uh, different views about what, uh, kind of tourism activities we want to do, but that's unusual. Most want to include them and some of them have included them. It's a little bit of a mixed bag in terms of how much you raise versus how much support you have amongst those short-term rentals. And it does take a lot of work to educate them, get them on board, make sure they understand, uh, the, the benefits of what you're doing. And a great example of that was Sacramento. Sacramento included them when they did the bonding effort that was talked about before. And there was significant opposition, uh, from the short-term rentals at that time. Uh, they've worked a lot with the short-term rental community since then. And mind you, short-term rentals generally aren't very organized. Uh, in some communities, in San Francisco, they have an association and they're organized, but in most communities they're not and it's hard to communicate and hard to educate them. But Sacramento worked very hard at it and in their most recent iteration of renewing their ongoing district, they, uh, actually got quite a bit of support from the short-term rentals. So I think it really is mostly a matter of time, is my guess, is, uh, we talked about that possibility here, um, and it can be done, but because this is a two-step process, uh, I think the thought was maybe we would come back at the second step at that time after working with them a bit more and include them at that point.
And when you say it's a two-step process, you mean this is like December, we, we bring them forward or in like?
No, no.
Twenty thirty-three, we bring them back to the table?
Hopefully neither of those. Uh, hopefully later than, it wouldn't be part of this process of raising the assessment right now. I think the thought was, let's see, let, let's get that going on the table so we can start this process of looking at facilities and identifying what can be done, um, and, and sort of energizing that, that effort. And then when we come back with a facility for council approval and most likely bonding, uh, to, um, have that come back and include them at that point. At least that's on the table. I don't know that any of that's for certain at this point, but, uh, that was some of the discussions.
Got it. Some two, three years down the road, we'd send out a different modification. So the rate would be the same. We would just say, hey, we're going to modify this one term that says you have to have twenty rooms or not. We're going to go down to one room.
And it actually would be a more significant change because we need to go in and modify your enabling ordinance, not just adjust the rate. That's all we're doing as part of this process. We'd have to modify that enabling ordinance because that only allows for a twenty-year term and for bonding, we'd want to go longer.
Okay, thank you for that background.
And as a follow-up to that, so if you include the VRBOs and the short-term rentals, they get a vote, right?
That's right.
But the votes are weighted, so it's not like the short-term rentals are going to outvote probably what the hoteliers want if they, if they were in agreement.
That's right, probably not, but it's, we want to have their support too. It's definitely a consensus effort.
Got it, okay. Anything else? Councilmember Kozlowski? Okay, I have another question for you, John. So, um, there was a slide up there that kind of showed how we stack up compared to our neighboring cities, you know, and we're a little bit behind in terms of, um, when you have the T O T and the bid. But, but when I'm going to look, you know, when I'm going to book at a hotel, I'm not looking at that, I'm just looking at the rate. So when you add four percent, you know, we can increase this bid, how does that make us compare just in terms of total rate to the hotels around us?
Well, how does your average daily rate compare to those other cities?
Well, this kind of put us out of whack. Are we under them right now because our bid is lower or?
I don't, I don't know what, I don't know those numbers. Can you speak to average daily rates?
Yeah, I can. Sorry. Thank you for the reminder. So Rancho Cordova is generally lower than us. Elk Grove is generally lower. Placer Valley is generally higher. You know, depending upon the day of the week and whatnot, but they're not a ton higher for four to ten dollars. for $4 to $10. But sometimes we're higher. Um, and like you said, when I go stay in a hotel, I'm picking the hotel. I'm not looking at the rate, and most people just understand the fees are the fees.
Yeah. I mean, I would say I'm not looking at the the different fees, but I am looking at the total rate, right?
Right.
Okay. Uh, and then, does this typically have any sort of impact on occupancy rates when you do something like this, when you increase it? Does it does it negatively impact your occupancy rate?
We haven't seen it, especially when folks are careful in terms of comparing themselves to others. And where you were at right now at 12, you are, we do a national study every year looking at rates across the country. And this year, out of the 100 destinations we looked at, that average came in at 15 and a half percent. And the larger destinations tend to be much higher, 16, 17% and up. So you are really quite modest where you are today. This brings you, I think, into a very competitive spot, not only with folks in the immediate vicinity, but looking at those numbers across the country.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Don't go too far, John, but I think we do have some requests to speak, maybe?
Yes, we have two requests to speak on this item. First is Bob Holderness, followed by Martha Lofgren.
If anybody else wants to speak on this item, if you just fill out a blue card and hand it to the officer, Officer McCullough. Thank you.
Mayor Members, Robert G. Holderness appearing this evening. On my own behalf, I'm not representing the views of any other person, business entity, nonprofit, political organization, or what have you. I've been following the city's efforts in the last several months to regain its mojo on the financial budget side of life. And it reminded me of the good old days when I first came to town in 1980. And I wanted to share it with you, not because it's irrelevant and I'm just an old codger, but because it's actually relevant to this project in a big policy way. So back in the early 1980s, Stan Geisler was our mayor, and he couldn't make payroll every two weeks. He had to move money around and not pay vendors and get out his rosary beads and so forth. And he was happened to be Mormon, so that didn't work too well. But he's launched an effort. He was a chemist from Aerojet. He was an educated man. He was a smart man. He launched an effort and started at home. He started at City Hall to figure out how to get the water department, the sewer department, the refuse department, to pay their fair share of the utilities at City Hall, to pay for the upkeep of City Hall and so forth. His first effort was to raise the water rates. The pro it wasn't a big raise. The problem was he lived on the other side of the river that had San Juan water. So he wasn't raising his own rates. He was raising somebody else's rates. And he got a chance to pay for that a few months later when he ran for reelection. And even though he was sitting mayor, he lost. But he did some really important things that got the ball rolling. He and the chamber president, the time Ron Kreckelberg, and Rod Carmody was also on the council, they spearheaded the effort to bring Intel to town. They worked with Sacto, which was the predecessor of the current Economic Development Team in Sacramento, to bring Intel to town, to bring Gekke on Saki to town. And that was an effort that paid dividends long after Stan left the council. It paid dividends actually largely when I was on the council because that's when Intel really expanded. They added two, three, four different buildings and got up to around 7,000 or 8,000 employees. But there were other things that he did that not only he, but his colleagues, that made a difference. They looked at trying to expand their retail operations. They weren't that successful. They didn't have that much lead time. They looked at the possibility of doing a new general plan to have greater density for residential. At that time, Russell Ranch was one house per five acres. And they looked at changing all that. Well, they got a lot of that underway. Then came Jack Kip. In 86, he came in and he was a retailer. So he didn't give a darn about Intel because they didn't pay retail. You know, he didn't care about Aerojet. He didn't. He cared about shopping centers and so the outlets. That was his big mama. And Walmart, those were the his two big achievements. And that, of course, did something that Stan's efforts didn't do directly, that is, it brought revenue to City Hall. On the other hand, Stan's efforts did something that Jack's efforts didn't do, and that is it built our economy. It gave us an economic basis where people could actually buy big houses, not just small 1,200 square foot starter homes. And and so my point of that is this is a relay race, and you guys are now in the middle of that race. And this is one of the tools that you have available to you. And I hope that you will use it, use it effectively. I think it'll be great. You've got our hotels are near the freeway. That's a good location to put some facilities. We have a hotel in the Historic District. That's another good place to put facilities. And I leave it at that, but I would advise our council colleague, Leary, that if she'd like to hear about the the train station depot or other ancient history episodes, I'd be glad to tell you the whole story. Because I think if you hear the whole story, you won't want to chew on the Chamber of Commerce about that. They did a wonderful thing for for our city at that time in question. So that's all I got. I took up too much time. Thank you, Mayor.
Next is Martha Lofgren, followed by Pat Finnegan.
Thank you, Mayor Aquino, Vice Mayor Rathel, and councilmembers. I wanted to briefly address one point, and that's why we don't have an a proposal in front of you to do the short term rentals. It really is a matter of timing. You heard the estimate that this would generate about $1.2 million a year. So every month that we delay this is $100,000 that's potentially not collected. We met, Joe Galliardi and I met with Councilmember Kozlowski and City Manager Whitemeyer, I think it was a month ago today. And and Councilmember Kozlowski asked, how how soon could a business improvement district opportunity to raise the rate be brought forward to the city council? And Joe said, oh, I think, you know, sometime first quarter of next year. And to his great credit, Mike said, that's just way too long. We got to get it on the agenda before that. And to his great credit, City Manager Whitemeyer made it happen. So our gratitude to both of those gentlemen for moving this forward. If we wanted to wait another six months, we could probably reach out to all of these short term rentals. But I think the better path is to get started. We have a consensus with the hotel owners right now. We have great leadership among all the council members to move this forward. So on behalf of the TedCorps board, would again like to reinforce what the Chair of the Board asked for, and that's that the council approved this resolution to start the process tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Pat Finnegan, followed by Shannon Robb.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to be here. It's been a while. I was a huge proponent of Measure G and incredibly disappointed when that did not happen. What was on that ballot, though, was the Economic Development Corporation and 15% of that funds that the 29 million were going to go to that agency. I was all supportive of that. That was a year ago. So that was actually on the ballot, and the community at 62% said, no, we don't want that. I think there would be substantial distrust if a year later, $1.4 million is going to this organization. They did have the that item up on the board that Ms. Aquino identified, and it indicated that there was an 8% Folsom T O T, a 4% current rate. Another 4% is going to get that to 16%. And the reality is, people do look at their bills. I certainly do when I travel, and I understand the total cost and so forth. Of course, I'm a CPA, so I'm looking to see what the taxes are. With that being said, though, 16% is about the the ceiling that we want to go for our community. So if we do allow this 4%, that means the community as a whole cannot go to increase our T O T. I don't think we should be scared about increasing that and going to the community to ask for support for that payment. That is what a democracy is. And we might not like the results. I certainly did not like the results of Measure G, but I respect the fact that the community said no. I hope we do it again, but it is what it is. So right now, this the agency, and I know I hate to be the ant in the at the picnic, but the agency currently gets $1.3 million in revenue. I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shannon Robb is the last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm up here today for two reasons. One, that I am a resident here in Folsom, and I also work for Choose Folsom, and I represent the business community. And so I know Councilmember Leary, you had brought up a few points, and I wanted to say a few comments about what I have seen and witnessed. One good example is one of our larger employers here, Inductive Automation. They had a user conference that they were bringing to that they really wanted to keep in Folsom. Their corporate office is in Folsom. They wanted to keep it here. They had people coming from around the world for this user conference. They were supporting our small businesses. Every year, they would fill up many of our small restaurant, our businesses on Sutter Street, and they loved having their conference here. Unfortunately, they we had no more space for them. They were doing it at the Harris Center. They're renting tents just to keep it in Folsom. And they had to leave. They moved the entire conference to Sacramento. They don't want to be there. They want to be where their home is in Folsom, but we don't have the space for them. And time and time again, I I hear that from businesses. I hear we where do we have where's meeting space? Where our hotels don't right currently don't have conference space? Where do they meet? And our businesses do want to stay in Folsom, but unfortunately, they're having to go elsewhere. And so I'm seeing that. I'm also seeing the benefit of when we do have events here, our small businesses really, really see the benefit to it. They're seeing the influx of people coming to their restaurants. They're seeing people shopping. They're going in retail. They're spending money. And every time we have an event, we're communicate or we know an event is coming to town, we communicate that with our businesses. And they, you know, we we let them know, and they they report back that it was very helpful for them. The California International Marathon is a great example coming up. Our fills our hotel rooms. These people come to Folsom. People that come to Folsom, they fall in love with Folsom. They potential future residents. As a resident here, why I I have a son that and travel basketball. I travel all over the place for basketball. Often, I'm going to Placer County. I'm not staying in a hotel room, but I'm going to their facility, and I'm I'm eating lunch. I'm taking the team out to lunch. My their his grandparents are going out to lunch. And so I feel like we are falling behind. And as somebody that really is passionate about this community and what we do, I feel like we need to do something now or we're going to be really left behind. So, thank you.
Thank you. John, could I ask you to come back up one more time, please? So can you just kind of explain what exactly is the role of the city in this? Because really, the hotels are agreeing to tax themselves, but but that requires our approval. Same thing with, I think it maybe it was last year or the year before, we had the Historic District wanted to increase their assessment for their Business Improvement District, and that has to come to the city for approval, even though it's the merchants agreeing to tax themselves to market their area. So can you just explain, you know, why is the city involved in this? How is the city involved in this? So that everybody is on the same page?
Yeah, that's a great question, Madam Mayor. This really is a quintessential public-private partnership. It doesn't happen without the city's approval. At the end of the day, you are levying an assessment on the hotels. It doesn't happen if this if the hotels don't also agree to it, right? Either through sometimes there's a petition process required. This particular ordinance only requires that you survive a majority protest. But it really is, it was envisioned in statute and is executed that it is both parties coming together. If both parties support it, you can do it. The city has an appropriate oversight role here. There is, as was mentioned earlier, there's a great deal of transparency, Brown Act, Public Records Act, there's annual reporting back to the council. You have complete transparency of what these organizations are doing and how they're spending their money. And and we would expect the council and the code does empower the council if anything goes wrong, if there's any sense of the money's not being spent appropriately or any violations, anything like that. The council has an appropriate role to sort of stop things or change things, to put it on the right course. So it it is private in nature in in many respects. Private sector usually leads these efforts and brings them forward, and they usually are managing the day to day. But there's a very important city role here, too, in terms of making it a level playing field so we know everybody's involved and an oversight role in the operations.
Okay, thank you very much. And just so my colleagues know, the city manager and I did receive the annual report from TedCorps about how the current bid is spent, and we've asked them to come back for a presentation so that everybody can be aware of that. One follow up question. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
One follow up question for Stacy. So the city, every so many years, we put out an RFP for somebody to basically administer the bid for us, right? And that's how we have this relationship with TedCorps?
We had a five year agreement with them when it first started, and then it's been renewed. So I don't know that there's been an RFP process done with that. But yes, we have somebody in contract, the city's in contract with them to administer.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, we don't have any more questions. Anybody have any follow up questions they have for any of our folks in the audience?
No question, just a comment that, you know, the I wish Mr. Finnegan had hung around a little bit longer for some of the rest of the commentary here. But this, the reason why I was eager to have this come before us is because, as he pointed out, you know, as has Ben pointed out, excuse me, this is a partnership between the hotel owners and the city to improve facilities, private and public, here in our city, right? And it is going to be paid exclusively by visitors or maybe our relatives that come to see us, but visitors nonetheless. And it's a relatively small amount of money on any given hotel stay, and it only puts us to par with our neighbors, right? So it at that point, saying, yeah, it's going to take us six months to get there, I said, there's 11 hotel owners. Go talk to them and bring this back as soon as possible. So this one seemed like a no brainer to me because as residents of the city, we get all of the benefit and pay almost nothing for those benefits. And it virtuously, as has also been pointed out, stimulates the economy on a macro level for all of our small businesses, all of our larger businesses. And when we talked about Measure G, it I said plainly then that we always have to be working on all three legs of the stool. Increasing the size of the pie, this is part of that. Increasing the revenue that we get from all sources, this is part of that. And making sure that we're attractive to businesses so that they come locate here. And that ultimately, the combination of amenities and businesses is what draws residents and has brought all of us here in the first place. So this one is as virtuous as it comes, and I'll be making a motion to approve.
Is that a motion right now?
That is.
Okay.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that issue of transparency and why I was asking. Those have been questions that had come floating around here for the 30 years I've lived here. And I just want to be sure that the residents trust, you know, what we're doing here and what, you know, how we're collaborating with the chamber and can and can be apprised of the results. And I've been a strong proponent, Shannon, for a long time for a conference center here. And it was one of the big issues that kept coming up during all of the River District discussions, you know, where people were whittling down the size of the hotel proposal for the corp yard to a small boutique hotel. So I totally understand that need, and and I and I hope that we can get there. But yeah, I really I'm looking forward to like a more complete, I guess, economic development plan about bringing businesses here and and improving the tourism. So looking forward to some upcoming answers to some of the questions I asked about how we're going to get that feedback from y'all. And maybe that can happen at the December or I guess the January meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We got a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roarbaugh, yes. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rathel?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Thank you all very much for coming.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Next is old business, item number 14, objective development and design standards for multi-unit and mixed-use residential development for general plan, mixed-use and residential overlay areas. This is continued from October 28, 2025, and includes resolution number 11464 and ordinance number 1357.
Good evening, Desmond.
Mayor Aquino, members of the City Council, and Desmond Parington, planning manager in the Community Development Department. I'm back before you tonight to talk with you regarding the objective design and development standards. Just a little bit of history, this came before you at your last meeting on October 28, but there were some concerns about the standards related to granting parking reductions in, in the regulated areas, including the East Bidwell Corridor, the areas around the Iron Point and Glen Light Rail stations, and the Folsom Town Center. In addition to that, there was also concerns about the appropriate level of, of review and changes proposed to the design review ordinance in Chapter 1706 of the Folsom Municipal Code. So just a little bit of background. As I mentioned before, we've done a number of studies looking at kind of the appropriate size and scale of, of development and the right design standards to be put in place. And we hired Opticos Design and Architectural Firm to develop those, those standards. Because as a reminder, as a result of state law, the city can only use objective development and design standards when we are evaluating and reviewing multi-unit development projects. In other words, projects with two or more units. So we, we prepared the draft, got feedback not only from jurisdictions, but from developers and architects. We then had a workshop with our planning commission, and then a hearing with the planning commission, where it was unanimously recommended to, to approve the, the odds and the ordinance changes, and then had the, the hearing with you at the last meeting. Again, we're trying to balance the desire to ensure quality design, site design and architectural design, along with the requirements of state law. And again, here's a snapshot of kind of a, a part of what's in the, the guidelines. The odds or the objective development and design standards, they regulate the physical form and, and design of residential and residential mixed-use development. And they, in order to streamline the review process, they must comply with, with the odds. But the odds themselves, you're not approving any development projects or anything like that tonight. So they apply, as I mentioned, to the, the areas here along the East Bidwell Corridor, around the Glen Station and the Iron Point Station, and then down in the Folsom Town Center area. So, looking back at the, at the, the text, and based on the, the feedback we got as part of the, the briefings, staff has made a, an additional, additional change to the parking reduction standards, or the standards that would allow for parking reductions. That's in the supplemental information that was shared with you this evening. Specifically, as it relates to bike parking, this increased to, to, from 1.5 to two times the amount of, of bicycle parking spaces, and the facilities required, plus secured bike parking, storage facilities for the bikes, including cages, shelters, or lockers. And that was to really increase the amount of, of parking that would be required. Typically, that's, that's one bike parking space for every five units. This would double that amount. And then also provide for secure locations for them to, to keep those bikes, so that they are there on site, and there, and people feel comfortable locking them and using them at the facilities. So this would allow for a reduction from 1.5 spaces per unit down to one space per unit. In addition, as we've talked about before, there are amendments proposed to Title 17, which is the zoning code, specific to the design review section, that would bring projects down to a staff level or ministerial level review, instead of a discretionary review, if they complied with the objective design and development standards. In, in addition, it would also rescind, rescind the existing multifamily design guidelines for a couple of reasons. One, the, the design guidelines can no longer be used when evaluating multifamily development. And second of all, they conflict with provisions that already exist in the zoning code and are quite outdated. So, as I mentioned to you before, part of the reason why we are recommending ministerial approval is simply because so many of the state laws, particularly those that are involving affordable housing projects, and those, and those projects paying prevailing wage, require, now require ministerial approval. There are some that, that do not, although they do work in, in tandem with some of the other laws, and, and can lead to a requirement for, for ministerial review. But the ones, such as SB 330, that we see used a lot here, do not, at this point, require ministerial review. So we've offered up a couple of different options for your consideration. So, the, the ordinance that you have before you tonight is the same one that was before you at the last meeting, and that recommends that the projects that comply with the objective development and design standards go through a ministerial review process. So that would involve a director-level review, no appeals, no public notice, no meeting. It would be consistent with state law for those projects that are, that are affordable and have, and pay prevailing wage. It also encourages folks to actually use and comply with the objective design and development standards, because they know if they comply with that, they go through a more streamlined process. So that, this would only apply in those regulated areas that I talked about. It would not be citywide. The other alternative, which is included in Attachment 4 in your packet, would, would allow for discretionary review. So there would be public notice, there would be a public meeting, there is the opportunity for appeal. Once again, under state law for multi-unit projects, we cannot, the council cannot, under the law, deny a project unless it makes a major health or safety finding. This, this is a longer process, but the state has put a, a cap on that, that length. In other words, you cannot have more than five public hearings on, on a specific project. It, while we would encourage projects to comply with the odds, they would always, because they go through a discretionary process, there would be less incentive for them to, to comply. So, so those are, and then that would require the commission and/or council, meaning depending on the, the location. So, assuming, regardless of which direction that you go on this, this, if it's, if it's approved, then it would go to a second reading on December 9, second reading and adoption. It would go into effect on January 8. We would be doing, between the 9th and the 8th, we'd be doing the outreach, again, to the architectural community, to developers, and we, we've been working on the, the forms. And then, long-term, we'd be looking at the effectiveness of how these objective design standards work, how the process is working, and whether they're resulting the kinds of projects that we want to see in the areas where we've increased the height and the, and the density. So with that, this is the recommended a, a action. I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have, and welcome any public comment.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Vice Mayor Rathel?
Thanks for cleaning up the language around the parking variance. I think it definitely looks much better. It's much more black and white, which is objective. So that's great. I think it takes away some of the really, you know, cheap incentives, and instead gets some substantial incentives that are there. Can you just walk me through the bicycle parking? I know it's a little, little higher up, but we just, you know, back of the envelope math here, 200-unit complex. I'm going to say, well, you get out of building 100 parking spaces. But instead, you only need to build 40 bicycle parking spaces. So, so the math can't be like, I'm getting you out of a car, and I'm putting you on a bike. I'm getting you out of a car, and I'm getting you to walk 60% of the time, and I'm giving you a bike 40%. Like, how does that, how did you guys come up with that number?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a good question. I mean, it, it, we were trying to figure out some, strike some kind of balance, because we're putting folks already in areas that are generally more walkable, or have easier access to, to transit. So the idea is, they're closer to services, they're closer to transit, they're closer to jobs. You know, to be honest, there wasn't, I, I don't have a scientific metric that can tell me, like, in a, in a large complex, how many people will ride their bikes, because it's dependent on so many different factors. But we, we felt that it was appropriate that if you're doubling the requirement, and you're saying, you have to have places on site, like bike lockers or cages, where people can securely store their bikes, and not having to jam them in their apartment, or lock them to something that's, you know, that's a pole, or something that's suspect, that could be easily tampered with, the, the likelihood that they're going to have a bike and use that bike for, for short, you know, for short trips around town i- is, you know, is, is more likely. And so, but yeah, it, I, I don't have a, there's not a specific formula out there that I could find that says if you provide X amount of, you know, bike parking spaces, you're going to get X amount in, in terms of reduction in, in vehicle trips.
So, just, let me repeat it back to you. So I'm understanding a little better now. It's not only are we giving extra spaces, but we're also making the spaces that they give much more likely to be used. So that's how we get the math there.
Correct.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kozlowski, any questions? Councilmember Roarbaugh? Councilmember Leary?
No.
All right. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No requests to speak on this item.
I'll move resolution number 11464.
Second. We have motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roarbaugh?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rathel?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
And then I'll move ordinance number 1357 with the alternate, alternate ordinance requiring discretionary review.
Okay.
Second.
Got it?
Is that the same, the same number ordinance?
Yes, madam, it is. But you see, Attachment 4 of the staff report.
So, not the, not the ministerial review that the staff was recommending, but discretionary review. Okay. Did we have a second?
Yeah, I don't know if I would call it discretionary review, but that's in the weeds. Oh, really? It's, it, with alternate, the alternate ordinance, correct.
Okay. I can't remember. Did we have a second?
Barbara.
Yeah, I said.
Okay, okay. We have motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roarbaugh?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rathel?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. All right. Last but not least, next item, please.
Next is item 15, resolution number 11500, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number four in the amount of $64,168 to the contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for Mangini Ranch Trails Project Design and Engineering.
Thank you, Ryan and Brett, for sticking around. And Kelly and Brad, too. There it goes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, and Ryan Neves, Capital Projects Manager for Parks and Recreation Department. Happy to give you a brief project update on the Mangini Ranch Trails project, and specifically, the item we're here for consideration tonight. And like you mentioned, Senior Trails Planner Brett Ballinger, who's the project manager, is also here, and can certainly answer any questions if I'm not able to. So, the specific item, resolution number 11500, is a resolution to execute Contract Amendment Number Four with Kim Lee Horn for trail design adjacent to Community Park East Site, as well as design of improvements along Westwood Drive and Mangini Parkway. So, little bit of background and kind of timeline of council action items associated with the project. The original design contract was approved by City Council in September 2021. And then, as design progressed, and staff began reviewing design documents, plans, and specifications, and comparison to what was existing in the field, we realized that there's still significant construction going on in some of the areas of work that was impacting the existing site conditions, and our design documents didn't match existing conditions. And so, working with the city engineer, we agreed to pause. Additionally, we didn't have all the right-of-way at the, it hadn't been dedicated to the city yet. So, so we put a pause on the project for a little while, and then as those projects wrapped up and rough grading was completed, we conducted additional topographic survey and moved forward with the project. Then in July 2024, we came to City Council for Amendment Number One, which included adding two additional segments that weren't in the original scope of the project. Then in January 2025, we came to City Council with Amendment Number Two for consideration of East Bidwell grade separation feasibility study, overcrossing, undercrossing, and I'll touch on that in a little bit more detail in another slide. Then in July 2025, City Council authorized executing the construction contract with Consolidated Engineering, as well as Amendment Number Three with Kim Lee Horn, which was for them to provide construction engineering support. And now we're here tonight for proposed construction amendment number four. So, Amendment Number Two was to consider a feasibility study for a grade separation at East Bidwell. The, the purpose being that the specific plan in the original project included a at-grade pedestrian activated mid-block signal on East Bidwell between Mangini Parkway and Savannah Parkway. And as construct, as design moved forward, as well as the construction of East Bidwell, and staff reviewed kind of the vehicular data, and felt that an at-grade crossing was not safe for trail users and, and the residents. So we wanted to consider an at-grade, or a grade-separated option. So that's what Amendment Number Four, or number, Amendment Number Two purpose was. The feasibility study went into detail and, and laid out basically two schematic layouts, one for an overcrossing and one for an undercrossing. The, both options have impacts. I've just briefly summarized the, some of the key impacts on, on the side here. And so, right-of-way, for both the overcrossing and undercrossing, the, the least impact is right-of-way, because the, the footprint of both could be contained within right-of-way that the city currently has control over. There are utility impacts of this overcrossing, mainly tied to the structure foundations that would be impacting underground utilities. There, there are minimal environmental impacts related to biological resources in the creek, but there are significant potential visual impacts with a overcrossing, especially adjacent to some of the residences. And then the constructability aspect, the overcrossing definitely is, is a less difficult constructible package than the undercrossing. And the cost range in $2029, including engineering soft costs, was between $9 and $11 million for the overcrossing. So the undercrossing is shown here. And again, minimal right-of-way impacts. It does have significant utility impacts. Obviously, the undercrossing is going under East, under East Bidwell, and would impact numerous underground utilities. It also would impact the adjacent hydromodification basin, and has some concerns with, with the high groundwater table and the impacts to the hydromodification basin of, of being a drainage maintenance concern. The visual impacts would be minimal, because it's below ground, but it does have additional environmental impacts, and additional permitting in coordination with CDFW that would be anticipated. The constructability, again, it's just a more complicated process with the undercrossing, with the underground utilities, traffic control related to impacting East Bidwell. And the cost is higher than the overcrossing, estimated between 12 and 14 million dollars. So, upon review of the feasibility study, staff in both Public Works and Parks and Recreation felt that it was not something that we could support at this time, either an overcrossing or undercrossing. So, we moved forward with the project, and the contract, construction contract was authorized in July, and we've been moving forward with our contractor, getting it executed. And as we were looking at some of the And as we were looking at some of the access and constructability concerns, there was this segment that is west of East Bidwell that we've, we call the N6 segment, and the N6 segment ties directly to the adjacent Regency at Folsom Ranch Trail project that's also under construction right now. And so you could see the existing undercrossing that is identified there at Mangini, that's where our N6 line ties into. And so, again, there was some access issues and just concerns with how we would tie to the other project. And so staff, both projects were publicly bid, and the scope and character of work of the N6 segment is consistent between both projects. And so staff coordinated with the Toll Brothers, the Regency contractor, to get a bid for the N6 segment, adding it into their project. And so.
Can you go back one second, Ryan? Sorry, I'm directionally challenged, so I'm, this is what you're talking about right here?
So that pink line is already in the Regency project.
Okay.
That's their phase two. And so the undercrossing that says pedestrian tunnel, so the N6 line picks up right there and continues north and would tie into, let's see if I can, would pick up there and go up to East Bidwell.
Okay. So we're tasking Toll Brothers with that instead of the city doing it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, both, you know, the city will be reimbursing Toll Brothers through.
Right, okay.
Our agreement.
But they're going to build it as part of the project that they're doing right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So our bid from Consolidated as part of the Mangini for this N6 work specifically was $580,000. The bid from Doug Veerkamp as part of the Regency project was $380,000. So it is a savings realized to the city of about $200,000. And so, once we've identified that there was some savings to our project, we wanted to see if we could put some of that to use to add additional improvements to our project. And so that's where this proposed contract amendment number four for additional design services comes into play. And so, the areas in black shown on the map are what is within our current contract. The area in red is the segment N6 that we are working with Consolidated to finalize a deductive change order. And then the areas in blue are the two kind of pieces that we're considering for adding to our contract. So the first piece is adding Class 1 trail around the Community Park East site where we will be tying in on both sides, and the future park site does intend to construct a sidewalk. But given the unknown timeframe for that, you know, this seems like a need that we've had community members reach out about, and so this is a good gap closure piece of the project that we would like to pursue. And given that our contractor will be mobilized and working at both ends of that, seems like a good option.
Can we get all the e-bike kids to pre-grade that for us?
Yeah, right. And then the other piece is considering Class 4 separated bikeway on Westwood Drive and Mangini. And the purpose for that, again, is just by eliminating the at-grade crossing at East Bidwell and not moving forward with the overcrossing and undercrossing, pedestrians will be able to walk, you know, when they get to East Bidwell, walk on the sidewalk to the crosswalk at Mangini, which is about 800 feet, or to Savannah Parkway. Cyclists can do the same, but it does seem like there could be some benefits that we could consider to make the mobility for cyclists a little bit better. And so, what that piece of the contract amendment four design would be to consider what the impacts would be to adding Class 4 bikeway, separated bike path. And so, Kim Lee Horn will put together a kind of a conceptual exhibit and make sure that we understand what the impacts are. And then, once we've finalized the design for both of those pieces, we would be getting an updated price from Consolidated to add it as a construction change order to our project. If it's not something that we're interested in moving forward with at that time, it could be a standalone bid package that we could put out to bid separately. But that is basically the two pieces of what design contract amendment number four would be. So with that, our recommendation, well, that is definitely misspelled, my apologies, is to recommend approval of resolution number 11500. Happy to answer any questions.
Can you go back to that one slide? Go back, yeah. Is this what we're thinking it's going to look like with these bollard things?
So, I mean, it could be just a visually separated, you know, sometimes there's green striping, it could be a raised curb, it could be the knockdown bollards.
Yeah. I mean, I just don't love the look of this. They have this all through, like, Midtown and Downtown Sacramento. It just looks so cluttered to me. What I think looks good is what we have on Liedesdorf, you know, where we have the sidewalk and then we have that raised kind of bike, and then we have the street a little bit lower. That's just my two cents. Questions?
Will there be a median strip? You know, in between the lanes heading in each direction? Because that slows down the traffic next to these bike lanes.
Yeah, I mean, something to be considered. Obviously, right now on Westwood, there's not a raised median. On Mangini Parkway, there is. So, you know, that's obviously part of the feasibility and part of the design work would be what the impacts are to existing median on Mangini, and then consideration of, you know, if it's appropriate in adding a median on Westwood.
Yeah, because I'm concerned, you know, about the bike lanes when there isn't one. Even though it doesn't really change the width of the street, it gives people a perception that they should probably be more careful driving through there, and then speeds drop down. I mean, that's, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Rohrbach, any questions?
Well, yeah, you brought up a good point. Is that what we have on Blue Ravine?
Yes. That's right by.
Oh, that is, that is blue. Okay, that's why it looks so familiar. Okay, I just looked it up and go, like, that looks so familiar.
I think I've hit that first one there a couple of times.
I kind of agree with you. I don't see that as an eyesore on Blue Ravine, though, but I haven't, now I'm going to notice it every time. I do like the idea of adding at least like a green, I like the green, the idea of putting paint in that kind of the barrier. I don't know if I love the lip. I don't know what the data is, if that's even more dangerous for bikers or less. But so I'd be, I mean, if you did something like that, it's going to cost more because of concrete, right? But I'd be kind of be interested in the data on that, if you entertain that idea of, you know, are there more bike wrecks or, I don't know what the consequences would be. But I think one solution would be just the green paint would be a little bit more visually appealing.
Ryan, the green paint is used for the lane, not for the no-man's-land protective area, right, in Sacramento? Isn't that's right?
I think.
It could be either, yeah. It gets confusing a little bit. I've seen both. Okay, all right. I did have one question. Oh, hopefully, we can take it upon ourselves to look for undercrossing locations of Prairie City Road so that we don't end up, after the fact, trying to cross over that gigantic, what will be a gigantic thoroughfare.
Yeah.
And let's preemptively have a plan for that because putting, you know, concrete vaults in before the road is built is way easier.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's my only comment. Thank you for all this work.
Vice Mayor Rethel?
Thank you for looking at the feasibility of the overcrossing and undercrossing on East Bidwell. I'm not giving up on it quite yet, but I do appreciate you guys have worked it very hard, and that number is still very large. So thank you for that. One of the challenges now is we're going to have these, at least from the east, from the west side, we're now going to kind of dead-end this path, which is going to kind of feel to me like I should just keep going, right? Especially if I'm 12 years old on an e-bike. Well, the traffic is, you know, pretty far away. It's only going 45 miles an hour. I can probably just kind of skip right across East Bidwell. Not a good idea. So are we going to have any sort of barrier that's there, or how are we going to keep people from then? I know on Blue Ravine, it's tempting, where we have those paths that come right out, and it's like, oh, supposed to go to the intersection now, but I may have been guilty of it once or twice, and I've definitely seen kids go across.
I mean, so there obviously is a raised median there, so, I mean, it, there's not a, currently a barricade at the, you know, edge of where, yeah, the trail will end. I think, you know, we do want to allow cyclists to get into the bike lane if that's where they, you know, need to go rather than continuing on the sidewalk. So that's the, I guess, the concern with placing a barricade at the edge of the, you know, end of the Class 1 trail there. But, I mean, certainly we could consider adding other, you know, visual impediments to crossing East Bidwell.
Even curving the trails, right, or having, you know, it wouldn't take much there, right? You know, maybe it's a hedge, right, or something? But if we just do our, you know, kind of low shrub or low plantings, it is, it's definitely not a detriment. And I know we've unfortunately had a fatality on Blue Ravine due to that, you know, somebody making that crossing. So just something to think about while we're doing.
Yeah, and if I could just chime in for a second. You know, Ryan mentioned the raised median on East Bidwell. It's also pretty heavily landscaped as a deterrent, too, so it's not, you know, clear parting of the seas crossing for anybody who wants to bravely take that crossing at East Bidwell. But we can certainly look at doing some radial flareouts with either paving or concrete in those areas.
And the east side won't connect anymore. Like, it doesn't get close to East Bidwell. It looks like it kind of dead-ended there because that'll be a deterrent, too. If the two sides aren't like looking at each other.
It's not super clear. If you're standing on one side versus looking over across at the other, it's not super clear, like, oh, I'm supposed to be over there. There is some landscape as a visual buffer, and then the current trail abuts right up to the back of Walk that's adjacent to East Bidwell.
Yeah, there is, there's, like, our proposed, or our current construction project ties into an existing trail that wraps around the existing hydromodification basin, so it does ultimately terminate at East Bidwell.
It does ultimately terminate, okay.
So that is a consideration.
Yeah, I guess if we, if we look at, I don't know what the other ones that are coming up, but staggering those two, you know, if we don't end up connecting them at grade, I think there's another one, is there another one further to the south? That was an at-grade crossing. Either way, if we could, just kind of keep that in mind when we move forward with design, I'd appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No request to speak on this item.
All right, then we will entertain a motion, please. I'll move adoption of resolution number 11500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rohrbach?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Rethel?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
All right, we're going to skip over city manager reports and go to council comments. Councilmember Leary, anything tonight?
I just wanted to report that I did a little tour of the facility, City Hall, with a Boy Scout troop of nine-to-10-year-old Boy Scouts a couple of weeks ago, who were, they were fascinated by this room and the very long table in the city manager's office. It was nice and shiny, and they just thought that was amazing. And that was during the time when they weren't trying to crawl under the table. I think they enjoyed the tour, but they, I'd also asked them about what kinds of things they'd like to see in town. You know, some of the parents were there, and just on their, on the list was another pool, this one is too crowded, fabric store was one of the moms, of course, an indoor mall, that was moms and kids, Wacky Tacky, which I guess is a site they visit in Rancho Cordova, and Sky Zone with a pool, and a place to drive go-karts. So I'm passing those recommendations on to the chamber when they're out looking for people to come in and fill some of our spaces here. And it was a lot of fun being in the Sacramento, the Vets' Day Parade, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Rohrbach?
Yes, it was a pleasure walking yesterday, and this parade, especially since it rained the previous year, was a great event. And just, I think, happy Thanksgiving, since we won't be here.
Good. Vice Mayor Rethel?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kozlowski?
I had the pleasure of being at the FHDA board meeting this morning, and they've got lots of big events coming up for us for the holiday season. There's a craft fair on the Saturday right after they light the Christmas tree. So those are coming up the first weekend in December.
All right, our next meeting is December 9th. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and we will adjourn at 9:15. Thank you.